Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. If you can see me over the heads of these very tall students here.[22.41][22.41][laughter] At this time, I'll call to open session this meeting of the Arlington ISD Board of Trustees on October 4, 2018, beginning at 7:03 PM. Thank you, everyone, for being with us this evening. As is usual, we will start our meeting with the opening ceremony. Please join Dr. Kavassos in leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
[inaudible] 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 [inaudible]
Thank you very much. And if you would now all silence cell phones and any electronic devices to avoid disruptions to those around you. And if you would also please join me in a moment of silence. All right. First, on our agenda's program, I think you can guess with the folks standing here in front of us. This is the student performance by our district-wide high school choir, Ms. [inaudible]. Oh, Ms. Burdo.
The AISD has a rich and successful choral tradition. Our groups have represented the district from San Antonio as invited on our choirs at the Texas Music Educators Association to New York's Carnegie Hall. This evening, we will be treated to a district-wide high school choir performing "I Will Lift My Eyes" by Runstead under the direction of Tony Worley, Lamar High School Choir Director.
[singing] 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 [applause]
Wow. You're incredibly talented. Thank you, Mrs. Worley, for your direction. Appreciate that. And to all the choir directors in our district, what a fantastic job. Great fine arts. I know we can't, but I'd love to get the audience vote for a second showing versus our board meeting, but I know that can't happen.
[inaudible]
Ah, let's do that. That's a great idea, Mr. Hogg. Thank you again very much. Very beautiful. So next on our agenda is the Student of the Month presentation. This month, we have our Arlington Collegiate High School. And if I could ask Principal Krieger to come on down and tell us about your student, please.
All right. Board President Dr. Reich, Superintendent Dr. Kavassos, members of the board. We appreciate this opportunity to recognize one of the many outstanding students we have at Arlington Collegiate High School. Today, we recognize 10th grader Alexis Lopez as a Student of the Month. He currently has a perfect 4.0 college GPA, but stands for so much more than just his grades. Alexis is highly motivated. He is a humble leader amongst his classmates. He is a student in the class who is not afraid to ask questions or make mistakes because he knows this will help him grow as a learner. He is always willing to help other students and consistently encourages them when they are struggling. The ACHS teachers and staff describe Alexis as thoughtful, committed, insightful, trustworthy, and reliable. They say he is a student who always serves as a true role model for all others. Two hallmark beliefs of ACHS are despite the adversity and the challenges our students face, if they have a great attitude and will provide efforts, they can go far. And Alexis very much exemplifies these beliefs. We're fortunate to have him as one of our students at Arlington Collegiate High School. We're looking forward to the great future that he's going to have and all that he can accomplish. So please can join me congratulating Arlington Collegiate High School's Student of the Month, Mr. Alexis Lopez.
[applause] Thank you for this recognition and honor that I am very grateful for. ACHS has given me the opportunity to strive for a better future and the motivation to reach my dreams. I would like to thank my family that is here, my mother, Julia Lopez, and my father, Rodrigo Lopez. I would also like to give a special thanks to the amazing people at ACHS. I would also like to thank my friends that have made the years at ACHS a truly amazing time.
Fantastic. So Alexis, thank you for introducing your parents, and thank you, parents, for being supportive and helping him to dream and realize his dreams. With that said, what are your thoughts for the future? Do you have any aspirations for a college career or anything?
Well, I want to, I'm endorsed in STEM, and I want to become either a mechanical engineer or aerospace engineer.
Excellent. We have wonderful opportunities in the district that can help with that. That's fantastic. Well, before you return to your seat, Dr. Kavassos and I would like to come down and give you a couple of items of presentation. [inaudible] This is sometimes Spence will say, hey, you got to speak into the mic. So I have a pin for you, Alexis. This is a pin that we wear as trustees that only we are allowed to give to those that are very special to us, have made great efforts in aligning with the values of what we try to pursue as a board for you as students in the district. And so you can take this and wear it every day of your remaining high school career and on into college. Wear it proudly, and thank you very much for being here this month.
And Alexis, this is a kind of a moment for you so that you can remember this day, and congratulations. You're such a great student. We appreciate you.
Wonderful. If you wouldn't mind, we've got some photos here. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
We are blessed with amazing children in this district. All right. Next on our agenda is the introduction of new newly-elected district-level instructional decision-making committee, DIDC members. Dr. Wertz.
President Reich, members of the school board, Dr. Kavassos. In the early 1990s, to comply with Texas Education Code 11.251, the district established the District Level Instructional Decision-Making Committee, which we call the DIDC, to advise the board or its designee in establishing and reviewing the district's educational plans, goals, performance objectives, and major classroom instructional programs, and developing and proving district-wide staff development plans. This district's site-based decision-making body consists of teachers, principals, campus-based non-administrative professional staff members, community members, parents, and district-level professional staff members. The committee has six regular meetings and called meetings as needed. At this time, I'd like to introduce the new committee members for the 2018-19 school year. And if you hear your name, if you'd please stand so you can be recognized if you're here this evening. Suzanne Kelly, she's a teacher at Arlington High School. Yvonne O'Hara, teacher at Farrell Elementary. David McGarretty, teacher at Bowie High School. Erin Robbins, teacher at Lamar High School. Barbara Brown, teacher at Amos Elementary. Sandra Sanchez, teacher at Sam Houston High School. Angela Ward, teacher at Piercey Elementary. Alice Jackson, teacher at Seguin High School. Kelly Hastings, principal at Young Junior High. Denise Scott, counselor at Bowie High School. Susan Anderson, specialist in the Department of Technology Integration Innovation. And Antrice Newsome, curriculum coordinator for Special Education. I want to thank you all for your service, and we're really excited to have the opportunity to collaborate work with you this year.
Wonderful. Thank you. And on behalf of the board, I'd like to agree with Dr. Wertz. Thank you for your participation. It's a very important committee. It'll do a lot of good work for this district and for our students moving forward. Thank you. All right. So moving on, next is, well, not appointments, but introductions for those that have been previously appointed or ratified. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, I'd like to continue our introduction of administrators that we were, we have appointed in the recent past. First, the Assistant Principal for Arlington High School, Ms. Roxanne Sierra. Roxanne attended Texas A&amp;M Commerce University for Bachelor of Science in Interdisciplinary Studies. University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, the Dean of Instruction at Rankin Elementary, has taught dual-language 5th grade and 4th grade and kindergarten in Grand Prairie. So Roxanne, Roxanna, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Dr. Kavassos, President Reich, members of the board, thank you for this opportunity to serve in my new role as Assistant Principal at Arlington High School. Thank you to Dr. Buell, Ms. Brown, my new Arlington Colts family for believing in me and my team for having my back even before I transitioned to Arlington High. I'd like to give a very special thank you to Dr. Dollar for encouraging me to take risks, believe in my ability to serve in Arlington High School, and coaching me as I begin my leadership journey in secondary. As I transitioned from students who could not tie their shoes to students who drive to school, I'm thankful to have people in my corner who believe in me and are my lifelong cheerleaders. My husband, who is always pushing me to do my best. My sister, who is my right hand and who is the second mother to my daughters. My parents, who unconditionally support me and who I hope to make very proud. Mr. and Mrs. O, who are like second set of parents to me. And to my two little ladies, who do not always get the attention they deserve, but they're proving they understand hard work pays off as they demonstrate this as students. I've been given two special charges, which I plan to deliver on. I will own the job, and I will always make it about the learner's experience by putting them first. I'm fortunate to have great leaders in my life who have guided me through my path in leadership, and I look forward to the day where a future leader might stand before you all and have me in mind as a leader who helped them in their journey. Thank you to my colleagues who have supported me along the way, and my Rankin family for the leadership skills you've taught me. And finally, I'd like to say how sweet it is to be in cold country.
[applause]
Next, I'd like to introduce the new Assistant Principal for Sam Houston High School, Mr. Jordan Williams. Jordan attended Texas A&amp;M University and the University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. At A&amp;M was Bachelor of Business Administration. Most recently, an Assistant Principal at Workman Junior High, has been a theater teacher and UIO coach at Sam Houston High School, has been a Director of Theater and Forensics Team, and Business and Litigation Support Analyst. Jordan, congratulations.
Thank you. Dr. Reich, members of the board, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos, I'd like to thank you, as well as Tracy Brown, for your trust in me to help to lead our students of Sam Houston High School as they prepare for their future in a college, in career, or in military. I'd like to take this time to thank some of the personal and professional mentors that I've had in education over the past 12 years. Anelda Costa, Ray Borden, Dr. Chauncey Reese, Fernando Benavides, which will now be twice, and Jackie McLendon. Your guidance, your support, as well as the fact that you consistently challenged me, has shaped me into the leader that I am today, and I am continuously grateful. I'd also like to thank the administrative staff of both Workman Junior High and Sam Houston for, over the past month, I've attempted to balance both schools, and you all have held both campuses down wonderfully. To the faculty and staff at Workman Junior High School, I have loved working with each of you over the past three years, and I am so excited to continue to cheer in your corner as you prepare our students for success. I am truly honored to return to Sam Houston High School, where I began my career in Arlington ISD. I am ready to join the faculty and staff as we help our students to achieve greatness. And finally, I would like to thank my family who is here in the audience tonight. My parents, my wife and my daughter, and my in-laws watching online in Arlington, Texas. Thank you for understanding that a career in education is not a nine-to-five job. It is a calling. It is a passion. And sometimes it has long days and late nights, but we do it every day with a smile on our face because we put students first and we believe in the impact that we have. I promise to continue to do that as your next Assistant Principal at Sam Houston High School. Thank you very much.
Next, the Assistant Principal for Owlsley Junior High, Kaisha Edwards. She attended Prairie View A&amp;M University for Bachelor of Science in Social Work and Sociology. Prairie View A&amp;M University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership and Counseling, and then Prairie View A&amp;M University for Master of Ed in Ed Administration. Most recently, a resource teacher-coach at Mansville ISD, has been a resource language arts teacher and a coach in Everman, and has also taught resource math and language arts and coached in Denton ISD. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, President Reich, school board members, and Dr. Kavassos. I am elated to be, to have the opportunity to serve as an Assistant Principal in Arlington ISD, and I look forward to executing the vision of Dr. Kavassos and school board members under the leadership of my principal, Grayson Topazer. There are some great things happening at Owlsley. I feel very lucky to be a part of the campus, and I will proudly stand next to staff, students, parents, and community members as we continue to empower and equip our students for success. Tonight, I'm very fortunate to share this moment with my wonderful family, my husband Robert Edwards, and my wonderful parents, James and Mary Sibley. Thank you so much.
Next, the Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary, Ms. Stephanie Mott. Stephanie attended University of Mary Harden Baylor for Bachelor of Science in Political Science. University of Texas at Arlington for Master of Ed in Ed Administration at Leadership Policy Studies. Most recently, an instructional coach in Fort Worth ISD, has taught Secondary Social Studies and Geography, US History, and World History. Stephanie, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos. It's an honor to stand before you tonight. If you'd asked me 15 years ago where I'd be today, my response would have included something about being a lawyer or a judge working with at-risk kids, but there was always a slow, steady voice that said, have you ever considered education? And that voice was my dad, who was a lifelong educator and is missing a football game to be here tonight. So thanks, Dad. Thanks for setting the example of what it looks like to hold on tight, sorry, to persevere and to keep fighting for kids. And if my instincts serve me correctly, that slow, steady voice was most likely prompted by my mom, who is the most consistent, equitable, hard-working, and generous person I know. And so I want to say thank you for modeling what it looks like to show up and to love fiercely and to fight for people, sometimes with words, but always with actions, and always to do it fully accessorized. So, thank you to my parents for the last 12 years, who have both served in my, as my sounding board, my cheerleader, and have opened your hearts and your home to continue to love people well, including Ashton, who's a former student and now family, who has lived with us for the last six years, and he serves as a constant reminder of why I dig my heels in every day. I want to thank specifically my former students, some who are here tonight. Lekendra is here tonight, and some who are not. At 22 years old, I walked into Dunbar High School, and I wasn't sure what I was doing, but I knew I loved each of my kids. Specifically, my first student, Rodrick, who challenged and shaped everything about who I was going to be as an educator, as an adult, and as a citizen. Because of each of you, I've found my voice, and because of you, my life's work has been to continue to advocate and impact change at a local, community, and systemic level. And it was, I want to reflect equitable opportunities and success for all students in those areas. In addition, I would like to thank Dr. Jarco, who conducted my first real adult job interview at Dunbar High School, and he served as my executive director at Trimble Tech, and he challenged me to think far beyond the operational lens of leadership and to delve into the realm of academics and culture. My first principal, Doug Williams, who was creative in his approach to solving problems and relentless in his efforts for excellence. I also want to thank Principal Omar Ramos, who continues to encourage me to dream big for our students. And some of my coworkers, Taishika Dawkins, Anitra McConie, Wendy Lamore, and Corey Brochus, who have consistently joined me in troubleshooting problems, but giving up was never an option. And I want to thank Dr. Patrick, who was my grad school professor and the namesake of our school, so that has been fun. And finally, I want to thank my Patrick family, and to Tracy Brown, who have put me immediately to work. I am confident I will have enough information for part two of my book, They Didn't Teach Me This in Teacher School. So our motto this year has been, you belong here, and never once have I doubted that this is exactly where I belong. So thank you for the Rodricks, the Astons, the Lekindras, the Jadas, the Jaquitas, the Daisies, and the Marias. We walk, that walk our halls every day. I am honored to serve as a Patrick Patriot. Thank you. [applause]
Next, the Assistant Principal for Patrick Elementary as well, Mr. Michael Thomas. Michael attended Texas Southern University for Bachelor of Science in Electronic Engineering Technology. Lamar University for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, an 8th grade Career Pathway teacher, coach, and data coordinator in Mansville ISD, has taught 7th grade math and coached as well, has been a 6th and 7th grade math and science teacher and coach in Fort Worth ISD as well. Michael, congratulations and welcome.
President Reich, members of the board, and Dr. Kavassos, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the students in Arlington ISD. Dr. Bertix Berry once said that when you walk with purpose, you collide with destiny. For that, I believe I have collided with my destiny to become the Assistant Principal at Patrick Elementary. I want to thank Mrs. Myers and the entire Patriot staff for taking a chance on me, believing in me, and allowing me to lead this great school. Because of you and the warm family welcome that you all provided me, I truly belong here. Thank you. I want to thank my former administrators, my many mentors, and special colleagues in Fort Worth and Mansville ISD, who have poured into me a wealth of knowledge and words of encouragement that have helped to keep me going and get me to this place in my educational journey. I also want to thank my parents and my four older brothers, who have shaped and molded my core values and never let, never let me settle for just being average. Lastly, I want to thank and acknowledge my beautiful wife and two kids who are here with me today. You are the reason I do what I do, and without you and your support, this moment wouldn't be possible. So thank you as well. Again, thank you all. I am excited about the great things that we are going to do this year. It is an honor and a privilege to serve and lead the Patrick Elementary family. Thank you.
Last but not least, the Assistant Principal for Wimbus Elementary, Mr. Mark McAllister. Mark attended Abilene Christian University for Bachelor of Arts in Human Communication. University of Texas in Tyler for Master of Ed in Ed Leadership. Most recently, a 4th grade math and science teacher in Birdville ISD, has taught 4th grade math and science in Texarkana as well. 3rd and 4th grade in Eagle Mountain. Saginaw has taught 4th grade in Keller, has been, has been a computer lab teacher, a 1st grade teacher, a 1st and 2nd grade long-term gifted and talented sub as well. Mark, congratulations and welcome.
Thank you. President Reich, board members, and Dr. Kavassos, thank you so much for this honor. I cannot overstate how honored I am to be here, and it's not because I'm proud of anything that I've done, because I'm only here because of a culmination of so many great things that have been done by people on my behalf. It's just that simple. I'm not here on my own, not even close. And so I'll start with my wife over here, who loves me and supports me far more than I deserve. She knows me better than anyone, and yet she still believes in me. Also, my children, Aiden, who got his first job this summer, which frankly is probably about as impressive as what I'm doing right now. And my two daughters, Ella and Anna, who by sheer cuteness alone wore me down to the point that I bought two rabbits this summer. So that's not the leadership you're looking for, but I promise I'll get better. I'd also like to thank Dr. Gary Miller and Tim Drysdale, two of my former principals who have invested in me far more than I can ever repay. Also to Deborah Wall and Keisha Harry, who have committed themselves to helping me succeed, hopefully before they themselves are committed. And of course, the rest of the staff at Wimbus, who's been so warm and welcoming to me and has treated me so well. And also, I'd like to point out your receptionist that greets people out here. When you're going in for two big interviews, the biggest you've ever had, it's really nice to have someone that makes you feel welcome and makes you feel at ease, so thank you for her. I don't know her name, but thank her for me. And lastly, I'd like to thank my parents, my mom, who always believed in me and said that I was gifted even if the test didn't agree. And my dad, who is also an educator, Professor Ameris at UNT, where he taught from 1963 to 2005. One of the smartest people I've ever known, had a PhD, but as he said, oh, there's plenty of idiots with PhDs. But more importantly than that, he modeled for me every day how I should love my wife, how I should raise my children, and how I should treat other people. When he passed in August of 2017, I thought it was fitting that I found a pair of shoes of his that would fit me because I've been walking in them my entire life. I'm actually wearing them tonight. They don't fit that well, but they fit well enough. And because he was my dad, they're comfortable, and they're not too hard to take off and not too hard to put on. So, so given all of that, everything that's been done on my behalf, my hope is that I will be able to invest in others the same way that so many other people have invested in me, because in the end, it really is all about the people. And people, though they may be difficult at times, they are worth the effort. Whether it's the ones that are walking through the doors in the morning that we hug, or the ones who hug us when we walk through the... or the ones who hug us when we walk through the door when we get home. Thank you.
Congratulations again to each and every one of you. We are blessed with an incredible talent pool, as demonstrated by all of you this evening. Thank you for serving in your capacities that you are. The underlying tone that I heard tonight was students-first. Always, always. And that putting students-first doesn't make it a nine-to-five job. That's for sure. They're always on, and you need to be as well. So, thank you for serving our students in our district. And if you wouldn't mind, our custom is that you would follow Mr. Cale out to the lobby so that we all may welcome and greet you. And I would ask the audience for your indulgence to allow the board to go first so that we can then come back in and work on some business here. So, it is 7:34. We will come back at 7:50. Thank you. All right. We will reconvene now. And next on our agenda is a public hearing, which we don't have one. And then the open forum for agenda items. I see no cards. No cards, so we will continue on. Next is the items to be withdrawn from the consent agenda. Are there any items trustees wish to be considered separately on the consent agenda? All right. Seeing none, then we will move on to the consent. And there are items for us to consider, including bids. Ms. Powell?
Thank you, President Reich, board members, Dr. Kavassos. There are three bids on the agenda for your consideration this evening. And in all three cases, we are recommending the low bids and the bids that represent the best value to the district. We also have donations to report this evening. We are submitting to you donations totaling $53,391. And that brings our year-to-date total to $296,774.
That's fantastic. Thank you, thank you. All right. Do I have a motion and a second for consent?
Move.
Motion by Mr. Hibbs. Got a second by Ms. Mays on the board first, Mr. Hogg?
I am all things to all things.
I don't see any lights indicating discussion. Please vote. Ms. Mays. It was not Mr. Hogg.
No, it was Mr. Was.
No, it was. He tried, but you were lit up. I gave it to you. All right. Consent passes unanimously. We will continue on now. Our discussion item this evening, the first one, is the Tasby Policy Update 111 and Board Policy EIE Local. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we bring for discussion Tasby Policy Update 111 and Policy EIE. This has gone through the Governance Committee, and we have had multiple discussions with that. And Mr. Hill has a brief presentation about the policies on this agenda.
Good evening, Dr. Reich, board, and Dr. Kavassos. As stated, this is an update policy with Board Policy 111. And policy is our favorite, so here we go. Just a little bit of background. Update 111 addresses some recent changes in both state and federal law, including some administrative code. EIE represents recommended changes from administration for better alignment with internal operations as we go through that process. As you all are aware, legal policies or legal updates are the law. We have no say in that, and the local policies need board adoption to make any changes or revisions to the local policy. Appropriate staff, including the Board Governance Committee, have reviewed these policy changes. We've had communication with our internal legal staff and Tasby, as well as all people who will be using the policy internally. We've all had to look at all of these policies. There are 66 policies in Update 111, 57 are legal, and nine are the local policies. Just a summary of 111. Some of the things that are included in there talks about board member continuing education, reporting of fraud or financial impropriety, criminal history review of contractors and subs, employee compensation, reasonable suspicion for drug and alcohol testing, and student-excused absences for armed service visits or recruitment. Just a visual of what those policies look like there. Again, there are 66 of them, 57 legal and nine local. So, a little bit closer look at some of them. BAA deals with, again, the reporting of CEUs or Continued Education Credits for the Board. CAA, Fiscal Management and Financial Ethics and Responsibilities for Reporting. DHE deals with the HR piece of reasonable suspicion for employees under the influence. EIE is a Standards of Mastery. That's a local policy that administration is bringing forth. FEA deals with compulsory attendance. And again, the students with 17-year-olds or older looking for armed service recruitment and excusing those absences. The legal policies deal with additions to the definitions of the Integrated Pest Management Program. DH Legal deals with additional provisions for federal drug-free workplace. FOF deals with the communication with the JJ AEP for students that are being transferred to JJ AEP and the ARD processing, making sure that the JJ staff is a part of the ARD. GBA deals with the confidentiality program of victims of violence, of family violence, and how we can assist those. Again, all of those are legal policies. The next steps, we'll continue to review these internally and working with the Board Governance Committee if necessary and appropriate staff to make sure that we are able to implement these policies and how they'll impact our daily work. And then the plan is to bring this back for an action item on the October 18th agenda. Point. We'll take any questions if necessary.
Very good. Mr. Hill, Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Reich. As Chair of the Governance Committee, let me think. First off, we've been messing up committees. Not Ms. Walton and Mr. Chapa as we reviewed these policies. I always hate to say it's an easier Tasby Policy Update, but this one, let's just say lighter than what they've been in the past sometimes. As you see, most of these are legal with a few local updates on this update of where we came in. Mainly, there's just a few wording in a couple of places, and then the EIE Local Standards of Mastery. Mr. Hill, you and your team, thank you so much for this update. We'll be ready to make a motion unless there's other questions at the next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Thank you, Mr. Hill, for the information. And advance, thank you, and Ms. Walton and Mr. Chapa for your work that you'll do on our behalf and get us prepared for October 18th. Very good. Thank you. Okay, moving on, our next discussion item is the Long Range Financial Planning or Capital Needs Assessment. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, President Reich. And this evening, we'd like to bring us a discussion item, the Long Range Financial Planning and Capital Needs Assessment portion of that. And so, this is a comprehensive look at our needs in the district in relation to capital needs. This is kind of an important first step for a complete comprehensive assessment for the future of the district. This builds upon our 2014 bond and the work that's been done there. Before they even present, I want to thank the staff and everybody involved in this assessment, because it has truly been comprehensive and has been really done strategically and purposeful and had a lot of input from different people. And so, with that, tonight, we'll bring this discussion item. We'll also have a lot of details in this, but also a chance to ask questions. I will say that this really sets the district up in terms of the future, the next 10 to 15 years. And so, it's an important point in the district, as there have been so many. This is an important point in the district in terms of our planning to best serve the needs of our students. So, with that, I'll ask Cindy Powell to start us off with this discussion. So, thank you.
President Reich, board members, Dr. Kavassos, good evening. You can see that I brought a cast with me this evening, a cast of friends. And everyone here has had a big part in this work, and it's important that you all hear from everyone that contributed. So, we will all take a turn at this. This is Part II of really a two-part discussion that we, as a board and administration, have had on long-range financial planning. You will recall that on September 5th, we met and we talked. And we largely talked about the general operating budget and the challenges we face there in terms of the way the school finance system works and really limits some of our opportunities on that side. We mentioned at that meeting that we would be bringing you all a very detailed presentation on our capital needs, long-range capital needs. And so, that's what we're doing this evening. Long-range financial planning, it's good practice for any organization. It's also a very important way that we ensure that we are being true to our strategic plan and that we are ensuring the financial stability and viability of this district for years to come. We have quite a history here of being very responsible and very careful in how we handle our finances and our long-range investments in terms of capital needs. And so, I hope you see here again, we've taken that lens as we've done our work. So, just to circle back, in our meeting on September 5th, again, we talked about the general operating budget and some of the challenges we have there. Again, we mentioned that we would be coming to you all to also talk about capital needs at this meeting. And we talked about the fact that we have an opportunity really to holistically address our needs, both our general operating needs and our long-term capital needs here. And so, we'll go into some of that detail later in the presentation again. At that meeting, we talked about financial priorities. We talked about this particular slide, and we stopped and had some discussion around it. The fact that our priorities include making sure that we implement our strategic plan with fidelity, that we maintain the financial strength and stability of the district by maintaining a strong fund balance, always trying to bring forth responsible budgets. We have to be competitive in the market to attract and retain the most qualified teachers and support staff. And so, we spent most of our time at the last meeting around those first four bullets. We talked briefly on the capital needs item. We talked in some detail about tax rate stability, and we'll touch on that again tonight. But the focus really will be tonight around our long-range capital needs. So, as we all know, we have a strategic plan that guides our work. Our mission is that we empower, engage students to be contributing responsible citizens, striving for their maximum potential through relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. And the key there for us, or for me always, is the relevant, innovative, and rigorous learning experiences. What we provide students in terms of our facilities, our learning spaces, our technology, our special program offerings are key to helping us achieve that mission. And then our goal is that all of our students will graduate exceptionally prepared for college, career, and citizenship. So, again, our capital investments go an awfully long way towards helping us meet our strategic plan. And so, these are the items as we have done our work really over the last 10 to 12 months that have guided our thinking. A, we want to make sure first and foremost that we have capacity for our enrollment today and our projected enrollment. We want to make sure that we have appropriate learning spaces for our students and spaces to support new and innovative programming as it comes online. We need to protect the investment in our facilities, just like we all do at our homes. We have to spend money to replace roofs and to upgrade air conditioning systems and countertops and flooring. And in the case of the Powell household at the moment, it's the master bathroom that we are working on. But those things are important to protecting your investment in your building or your home. And it's something that you have to continue to work at. It's not something you do once, and then you do again 10, 15, 20 years down the road. It's a constant thing. Current technology is key to learning, and especially in innovative programming that we offer. And access to programs. This was a big theme in our 2014 bond program. Access to fine arts instruments for kids who want to participate in fine arts programs. Transportation to get kids to special programs. And just other offerings, career tech and athletics. And so, we want to make sure that we continue to provide the appropriate access for our students and do all of it in a manner that promotes excellence in learning for our students. We have made some very significant investments in our schools and in our district and through our current bond program, the 2014 bond program. We're in year four of the program. It's a five-year program. I'll remind everybody that as we were putting that bond package together, we identified needs that totaled up to $860 million. Through the work of a Capital Need Steering Committee and administrative staff, we ultimately determined that the appropriate amount to take to voters was $663 million. And so, that was the total that was presented to the community in May of 2014. And that proposition passed. You can see that that bond package was divided really into four broad categories. And we will continue our work talking around capital needs around those four categories, as you'll see as we move along this evening. So, just some highlights on what we have done in this current bond program. We built two new elementary schools, the Diaper Career Technical Center and Ag Science Center. We've opened MACs, or Multi-Purpose Activity Centers, at each one of our high schools. We have made field improvements to junior high school tracks and fields. We have upgraded and added special ed spaces at junior high and high school. We have just broken ground in the last couple of weeks on a new fine arts center and athletics complex that will be funded through the bond program. Every one of our elementary schools has received two STEM labs and a springs room and security vestibules, every one of them. We have made fine arts and career tech improvements in our high schools. And we've made condition improvements at all of our schools. Everything from rust to replacing HVAC systems, electrical systems, plumbing, parking, sidewalks, just a wide range of improvements to all of our facilities. And certainly, technology. We've made a significant investment in technology through this current bond program. And we have dramatically expanded our inventory of fine arts instruments so that any- so that any student who wants to participate in fine arts can do so and have access to the particular instrument that he or she is interested in. And we have replaced older buses with much more energy-efficient buses we've added to our bus fleet. We've also replaced old white fleet vehicles for our maintenance and security and other departments, and we've added to that fleet. So, we have, we've made some very significant investments through this current bond program, and we see the effects of those investments every day in our schools. Just a couple of high points here. We know that, or we're very confident, that this current bond program will end on budget. It's honestly, it's taken us to this point to be able to say that with a great deal of comfort, but I think we're getting close enough that we can say that we are confident that we will complete this bond project, our program on budget. All the projects, other than the Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex, will be complete by December of 19. The Fine Arts Center and the Athletics Complex are underway, as we said, we broke ground there just two weeks ago, and I think you'll see some pictures later tonight of the work that's already taking place over there, the site work. And those two buildings are scheduled to open in probably August or September of 2020. Substantial completion is set for July of 2020. One of the things that we've been very proud of and we've worked very hard on is that through this current bond program, we found opportunities to enhance what we plan to do through the bond program. I'm going to show you some examples of where that has happened. At the Dierper Career Tech Center, we partnered with Maritz Dealerships to fund equipment in our auto tech lab. At our Ag Science Center, we used surplus fund balance monies to provide some net-zero features, solar panels, a water reclamation system, and wind turbine. We partnered with the Boys and Girls Club to construct additional space at Peach for them. We have invested additional funds in our multi-purpose activity centers on our campuses to provide greater spaces for students. We did that through bond dollars. And we partnered with the Jones Foundation, Youth Foundation, the NFL, and Helles Construction for improvements at the Workman Football Stadium. We've also, through the Athletics Complex and the Fine Arts Center, the district has chosen to invest additional resources out of natural gas funds into these two projects. We partnered with Texas Trust to create a, an outdoor performance space at Jones Academy. And then, at Sam Houston High School, we built a ninth-grade center, a new cafeteria and a new kitchen out of surplus general fund, funds. And so, all these things have just, have enhanced and improved and advanced the work that we've been able to do through the 2014 bond program. So, as we began really last fall talking about, okay, you know, the future, what comes next, we, we had discussions internally, even Finance Department first, about, you know, this has to be a holistic look at our needs, not just focused on the next year's budget or even the four-year budget forecast, which is something we do every year. We needed to take a really deep look at our long-range needs and including program needs for instruction and how we needed to support those, those programs. And so, we ventured off and we've, we've been working on this for really almost 12 months, 10 to 12 months, starting first really on the general operating side and some gaining an understanding of what our options were under the school finance system for generating revenues. And then, as we really began to move towards the capital need side, we said that this was something that was going to require input from a lot of people. And as you will see this evening, there has been significant input already into this work. My guess is, at this point, I think there are over 200 people have had, have had some hand in the findings and the reports you're seeing this evening. And you're going to hear from some of them, not all 200, you'll hear from some of them here this evening. But our lens was, okay, we need to examine our program priorities first, our strategic plan. We always go back to our strategic plan. And what kind of programming are we creating and do we desire to have in the coming years to support the strategic plan? And then, once you answer that question, then you begin to ask the question, what kinds of spaces do we need? What kinds of equipment do we need? What kinds of transportation do we need to bring those, those programs to life, if you will, and to sustain those programs? And so, the lens of our work was, was around that. The work, ultimately, we will prioritize the needs to the next five years after our current bond program. Really, that 2020 to 2025 period is, is where we're focused first. What you're going to see tonight, as we talk about technology, fine arts, and transportation, those needs are already cued to five-year needs. On the facilities piece, what you're going to see are, is a very comprehensive look at facility needs that goes well beyond five years. It's probably closer to 15 years. And so, we would not expect that we would come to this board or come to the community and say that everything that we talk about here tonight for facilities is something that we would expect to have in a bond program in the next couple of years, not at all. This is our attempt to capture needs, to support long-range instructional planning, and then begin to work at phasing those investments over a period of time. This goes back to that best practice of long-range planning. And so, please keep that in mind as we go forward. I've got two slides here that just begin to try to capture all the people and the groups that have had input on our work this evening. It started with looking at all of our facilities, looking at the capacity in our schools, our enrollments, our enrollment projections, and how we use our buildings to understand, do we have enough schools, enough classrooms to serve our students? That's a very basic question. That involved consulting firm Cooperative Strategies. It involved campus principals reviewing their building floor plans and telling us how they use every room in their buildings. It involved Finance Department putting pieces together, working with our demographer on long-range enrollment projections and marrying that up with, with our capacity data. Enrollment projections, again, Templeton Demographics, our demographics consulting firm. Instructional programming, we've spent a lot of time with Dr. Wertz and his team in talking about the strategic plan and programs that they see coming online in the next few years and things even maybe that are not new, but things that we need to understand, are we providing the appropriate tools for teachers to deliver instruction, whether that's in a STEM lab or an existing band hall or just a collaborative learning space? All these are things that we discussed with them at length and took their input. They in turn went back and worked with their departmental staff and their teachers, their resources out in the schools, and brought back to us detailed reports on, here's what we need in our programs in the next few years in order to appropriately deliver instruction for our programs. We had a K-2 teacher focus group. We took input from teachers. We had about 45 people, I think, that met one day at the PDC. We invited from all over the district to talk about how they teach in their classrooms, and the focus was really on early education. And they gave us wonderful feedback that really focused a lot around flexible furnishings and flexible materials in their classrooms. In the extracurricular area, we worked with athletics and fine arts. Steinway &amp; Sons had performed an inventory of all the pianos in the district and gave us a condition report there. See, that information has been incorporated into our, our assessment. In the technology area, Chad Branham and his team led a district technology advisory committee to look at what our technology needs are in the coming five years. In terms of facility condition, this largely involved our plant services teams and some outside consultants. We, we took our plant services team, and you'll hear about this from Mr. Horn, divided them into two teams. We inspected every single campus and used a consistent tool for gathering the data for what, what we identified as needs, put the pieces together. They were reviewed by the senior plant services leadership team, and we would go back and reinspected, need be, different sites. We had an architect firm, Corrigan, that inspected all of our elementary schools and administrative office buildings. StanTech was another architecture firm that we used. They inspected all of the secondary schools and all of our athletic facilities, and they provided us data in their own assessments on conditions of buildings and how we might prioritize work throughout the different buildings. We also used other consultants, a roof consultant, Armco, Glenn Engineering for civil work and for ADA accessibility. We worked with FDP Kitchen Consultant to inspect every one of our kitchens at every campus and give us detailed reports and recommendations on things that needed to be upgraded or perhaps whether, let us know if we had places where we didn't have appropriate space even, or if we had freezers or coolers that were needing to be replaced. So, a number of professional consultants that assisted in this area. And then, in terms of operations, that involved a number of internal departments, everyone from plant services area, the warehouse staff, food nutrition services, transportation, security, special ed department, and career technology, looking at equipment needs, and again, at spaces such as even clinics and, and athletic spaces to determine what our operating needs are. So, there's, there's a whole lot of people that have had a hand in this, and we've got a lot of slides, and Dr. Wertz keeps giving me a bad time about how many slides we have, but there's a lot of people that have had, had a lot of input on this. And, and what you're going to see this evening, and I just say that to say, is really a very summarized look, a high-level look at, at our work and our findings. We have a lot of detail behind this that as we move forward, we likely will, we will delve into the detail, but tonight's about the high-level overview. Again, our assessment work is focused around the same four areas that we've had in the current bond program and in the 2009 bond program, facilities, technology, fine arts, and transportation. And so, with that, I'm going to start off on the capacity and utilization piece, and then we'll, we'll go through each one of our respective areas. Again, you know, one of the very basic things we have to know is, do we have enough space to serve our student population? And do we have, are we planning to have enough space for enrollment down the road, not just today? And so, we contracted with Cooperative Strategies. Some of you all will remember them as DeYoung Richter. They merged, DeYoung Richter and Cooperative Strategies merged, merged probably a year and a half, two years ago, and so, the new name of the firm is Cooperative Strategies. We worked with them to, to determine a capacity for every one of our buildings and then shared with them how our buildings are being used, and then they, they helped us also calculate the actual utilization of our buildings. And so, we, we gave them a floor plan for every one of our buildings. They color-coded them and into the type of space it was, whether it's a regular classroom or special ed classroom or being, something that's being used for a resource such as PLCs or small group counseling or other type of planning work, maybe even a PTA room here and there. And then, they sent that color-coded report back to us. We sent them to the principals, and then the principals marked them up and told us, you know, if we had something that wasn't correct or we had not captured something, and then send that back to Cooperative Strategies. So, ultimately, they use that information to, to determine building capacity. And the capacity that they have calculated is the capacity that is based on our current program. So, programs can change from one year to a next. So, if we have a particular special program in a building that maybe has a small number, serves a small number of students in a classroom, maybe a very specialized, special ed class perhaps, then the capacity calculation takes that into account, and they, they, they calculate capacity for that small program versus having a regular class that may have 22 to 25 students in it. So, they take that program information and use the, the program information along with the data from our principals to determine, here's, here's how many students we can serve in your building based on the program you're offering in your building. And we do not consider temporary buildings, those are excluded. We simply are trying to determine the brick and mortar, the capacity of our brick and mortar facilities. The very high level, what you see here is a breakdown by grade span of the calculated program capacities, and then you see a column that says optimal maximum program capacity, and it's different, and I'll explain that in just a minute, based on the, the actual grade span. And then, enrollment last year, because this, this work started last year, that was the data that we gave to Cooperative Strategies. And on the far right-hand side, program utilization. Cooperative Strategies has shared with us the optimal maximum, or the optimal program capacity for elementary, so somewhere between 85 and 95%. At the junior highs in the high schools, it's 100% because as part of their capacity calculation, they have already factored in there the planning periods that teachers have. And so, they've already taken into account that you may have some, you've got spaces that aren't used every period of the day, whereas in an elementary school, they, they assume that those classrooms are, are being used every single period of the day. So, as you can see in the far right-hand column, we are underneath the, the recommended capacities at each of these levels. Another thing I'll point out is that at the high schools, we've already taken into account here in our calculations, those students who leave our traditional campuses to attend a special program somewhere else, such as UTA or the Career Tech Center or Arlington Collegiate High School. So, we've already taken those students into account on both the enrollment side and even on the capacity side. So, conclusion on, on this work, our study has shown us that, that our existing schools can accommodate our enrollment for projected 10 years. We actually have been trending down just a tick in enrollment in the last couple of years, and our capacity and utilization studies show us that we, based on, on the way we use our buildings today, based on our long-range enrollment projections from our, our Templeton demographics, our student demographics firm, we have adequate space to serve our students, we expect, for the next 10 years. That's good news. We don't need to build new schools to accommodate necessarily enrollment growth, which is some of what younger districts face, growing districts. That is not something that, that we have to address here. Our needs will be more around replacing some buildings and talking about program needs. We also know that because we have some capacity in different places, we have the ability to consider additional special program offerings in different places throughout the district. That's important to us for our long-range planning as we look at our strategic plan and our desire to give students more choices in their learning experience. So, I'm going to stop there. I guess we can maybe stop at each section, or you want to go? Okay, so we'll...
That's what I'd recommend, is pause after each one to give opportunity for questions instead of having so many at the back end.
Okay.
So, with that, do trustees have some questions? Okay, Mr. Hibs.
Thank you, Mr. Powell. I appreciate the thorough presentation that you always give. On that last slide, capacity utilization study and conclusion, okay? You, you mentioned that for enroll- You mentioned that for enrollment growth over the next 10 years, it looks like we have the capacity to fit everyone. Let me ask you, did the, when you were looking at the facilities themselves, did you, was there any concerns or questions about potentially some buildings just getting so old that they may just need to be raised and-
We have, and you're going to hear about that in just a few minutes from Mr. Horn, is going to specifically address that.
Okay, then I'll hold that question. Get ready.
Thank you. Mr. Hibs, Mr. Choppa.
Thank you, President Rush. Ms. Powell, I had a question on the slide that says capacity utilization study, and it had the enrollment projections or the enrollment utilization. Yes, that one. I'm just curious, do you have the number that the enrollment and utilization would be if the adjustment that's in the note had not been made?
No, I do not.
Okay.
We started out, we just told them right from the start, we've got these students, we gave them the student counts and said, you know, for example, a Martin High School or an Arlington High School, we have an average number of students that leave those schools each period of every day to go to the Career Tech Center. So, we just went ahead and made the adjustment for that right off the bat.
Right. So, it would be correct to say though that the enrollment for the high schools is actually higher?
Yes.
It's just that those students are cycling out each day.
And hence the note, that we went ahead and we adjusted that number to arrive at the number of students being served any period of the day on campus.
And with respect to those programs in the note, the Collegiate High School, the Diapered CTC and the Ag Center, those programs themselves are pretty much at 100 percent utilization, is that right?
Yes, that is correct. And to your point, you know, we are planning a new early college high school because of the demand there. And right, the existing one is full. The Career Tech Center is really full at the moment. And so, yes, we've already taken that kind of thing into account as we've looked forward to what our future needs may be.
So, something that I imagine is going to be maybe previewed a bit later on is potentially an expansion of the CTC.
We've talked about CTC spaces, maybe some at the home high schools, and potential enhancements at the Career Tech Center. They're not dollars specifically in here for an addition at the Career Tech Center at the moment.
Okay, but for career technical programming generally?
Yes.
Okay, those are the questions I have right now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Choppa. Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, President Rush.
Oh, let's try this again. I don't know what happened there.
Thank you, President Rush. Thank you, Cindy, Mrs. Powell. On the slide that says capital needs assessment, for the capacity and the utilization study, was that also looking at any underutilized or any efficiencies for our capacity for capital needs as well, or only what we would need in addition to what we have?
Well, it was evaluating how we use our spaces today. And then we took that data and looked at it in concert with our enrollment projections to see future needs. But from this study, we can identify individual schools where we might have enough capacity to maybe consider offering a special program there. And so, that's just, that was something that, a piece of information that will guide some of our decisions moving forward. And I'm not sure if that answered your question really, but-
It does. Yes, I think it does. And then my last question, do we look at any of the prior facility assessments that we've done? Because I know we've done several over the past years and kind of see the flow of any consistencies, anything that's showing up that we maybe have avoided accidentally or missed over the last several years?
So, yes, and we've really only done one other comprehensive facility assessment in this district, and that was in 2013 as we prepared for the 2014 bond program. And we knew, you saw the slide earlier that showed that we had identified a total of like $860 million of needs. Ultimately, what went into the bond package was 663. So, there were some things that were identified in that previous assessment that were considered lower priority items, things that did not require immediate attention, that did not make it into the bond program. That was kind of a starting point for us. And some of that stuff we've actually been able to do over the last few years through operating budgets. Some of it was more cosmetic than anything else. But, yes, that was a starting point for the work for this current assessment.
Okay. And I think that's it. My other question was on the same slide that Mr. Choppa just talked about, but I think you answered my question as to the difference in those numbers and not repeating students that are receiving programs at two different locations. So, I'm assuming then the difference between the permanent program capacity and the 17, 18 enrollment numbers would be that additional capacity for the extra-
Right. Well, the capacity shows us how many kids we can serve at the high school level, junior high and elementary in total. And then the enrollment is, you know, it is adjusted for students who are not in their buildings, okay? There are the kids who are being served either at UTA or at the Diaper Career Tech Center, and they're not on a home campus or at the Ag Science Center. And so, you take your enrollment and you divide that by your capacity, and that tells you the percent of your available capacity that's being consumed. And the fact that we are below our recommended capacities with our utilization, that tells us that we've got ample space and we've got some opportunities in some places with special programming.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Rush. Ms. Powell, I have two questions. Since 2014 or 2013, when we were creating this last bond, what's been the percentage of increase in construction costs that we've experienced doing this 2014-
We have about five to six percent per year. Yeah.
Five or six percent?
Per year, yes. And, you know, we hit a time right after we passed this bond package where a number of cities and school districts and counties throughout the state likewise pass bond packages. And so, there was a lot of demand for construction work. The economy was doing very well. And so, it wasn't just public entities, it was also there was a lot of private development that really put a large demand on the construction industry. And so, we have seen large increases just from that, plus other factors, and most recently steel tariffs that have an impact on pricing. And then, you know, certainly Hurricane Harvey and other large-scale events like that that create an enormous drain on materials and on labor. So, yes, we have, we've had a real challenge with that.
Thank you. Sure, go right in. So, to Polly's question, do we have any anticipation? I mean, I know we can't predict the natural disasters, but are we, do we have any type of prediction that it's going to continue to grow as fast over the next five years? Or is that something that we've looked at or considered?
We tried, we tried to be very conservative with our projections, and that's something that we will refine as we move a little further down the road with this. Our costs that we've captured right now are conservative for today as we have to know what projects we're doing and when we are going to do them in order to begin to factor in and actually apply inflation to specific dollars amount. And so, we, I can't tell you today that there's funding in here for inflation. I think for the next several years, I would probably say that next two to three, Mr. Horn, would you say is probably reasonable to expect that we'll see some inflation similar to what we've experienced in the last couple of years?
Thank you. And my last question is, on the temporary buildings, I think we've been trying to decrease the number of those on our campuses for obvious reasons. And I just was, how are we doing on that? How many temporaries do we still have?
We have, and we actually are tracking that, and I can't call the number off the top of my head. Do you know how many we've-
I don't remember. Can you get that?
We'll get that number, but we have eliminated a number. I mean, let's just talk about Sam Houston High Schools, one where we had, how many? Twelve there that we've eliminated. We had a number at Workman. And so, we have eliminated a significant number. And I'm sorry, I can't quote that off the top of my head.
Is it pretty well distributed, high school, junior high, elementary?
We've had more at the high schools and the junior highs, just because that's where more of them were concentrated. But as we have, you know, Ellis is another example where we had, how many?
Five.
Five there, and we've eliminated those. So-
Yeah, I think we eliminated a number at Bergen when we opened McNutt and, yes, so forth. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I have one question, seeing no other lights on this section. So, with the capacity that exists for additional special programs, does, and maybe it's very preliminary and too premature to ask this question, do those capacity opportunities lend themselves to special programming within existing campuses versus campus consolidation to create a special program at what was a campus?
Right. And I think the answer is very, in short, yes, it's more about creating opportunities for programs within a campus more so than consolidating campuses.
Okay.
If you look down through the detail of all the campuses, and I've done that, right off the bat, I don't see a place where the utilization is so low at two schools in a general vicinity that you would say we could consolidate the two schools into one building. But I think that's something that we're going to continue to look at down the road to see what opportunities we do have to be efficient, but-
Sure, great, thank you. I don't see any other lights indicating questions on this, so I think we can move on to programming.
And this, Dr. Wertz is going to talk about our programming priorities.
And you probably have too many slides.
No, I have significantly less, so I'm getting called out this time. Good evening. I'm happy to be here tonight to talk to you a little bit about some of the programming considerations that we feel would inform this process. I kind of want to ground our conversation tonight at the beginning about our mission, about creating innovative, rigorous and relevant learning experiences for our students. And I'm going to start back at the early childhood education years. This is a topic that you know has been part of our legislative agenda now for several years. It's a big topic across the United States about pre-K. And we know that pre-K education and then programs that go from cradle to kindergarten are important in terms of the kinds of trajectory that it puts students on in terms of their learning. In a study that came out in 2017 entitled Current State of Scientific Knowledge for Pre-K Effects, it showed that pre-K was highly beneficial for students who come from low socioeconomic backgrounds and specifically second language learners who often come to school underdeveloped in their pre-literacy and mathematics skills. There was a meta-analysis conducted in 2016 of 22 high-quality experimental and quasi-experimental studies between 1960 and 2016. And the findings show that there was significant reduction in special education placement, grade retention, and increased graduation rates of students who actually attended pre-K. And so, I want to share those because you'll notice on our first bullet, one of the program considerations that we're putting out there is the addition of standalone pre-K facilities around strategic locations in Arlington. We know that pre-K is something that's very much needed by our student populations. We do have a half-day pre-K available to all of our students who qualify in our elementary schools. But we know full-day pre-K is coming in the state. It's a big topic, but we have a capacity issue in Arlington. We don't have enough room to house full-day pre-K for everybody. If we were to add additional, strategically add additional standalone pre-K centers in specific parts of the city, in combination of those plus the space that's, that will be at the elementary schools, combined would set us on a trajectory where we could, if we chose to, house full-day pre-K at some point in the future. We also know that in early, in elementary schools, we want to add innovative programs where kids have opportunities to have choice and the kinds of experiences they want to engage in at schools. We are opening STEM, a world language academy, a leadership academy, fine arts academies. We are implementing our pilot program around the foreign language in elementary schools. And we do believe that it's going to be needed or the opportunity will exist to expand those programs to other parts of the city so that it's accessible to kids in different parts of town. One of our biggest gaps in terms of academic programming is at the junior high level. We've spent a lot of effort in the last five years building programs at the high school level, adding several things at the elementary level, and there's this gap in between. And a lot of conversation we've been having is how do you create a pathway so that students who start in elementary ranks can continue all the way through to their graduation? So, to that end, the programs I just mentioned in elementary now have to find their way to junior high. And so, we know we have two fine arts dual-language academies that are currently housing students in grades kinder and eventually through sixth grade. We will need to identify a location where we can then move those students to junior high as they go through, they matriculate through their junior high years and experience a full, robust fine arts program at their junior high years in preparation for high school. We also want to have a location there where they can continue in their dual-language learning, where they're not only fine-tuning and learning of that third language, but that they're continuing in the second language that they've really learned to master. And not just master in terms of what you would call is in the AP route, but even as they continue taking content areas in the target language. We are interested in bringing more opportunities for career tech down to the junior high levels to allow students to engage in workforce readiness at earlier ages and also give them opportunities to participate in an increased number of high school courses at junior high. Right now, we do offer some high school courses at junior high. We have kids that take algebra. We have some students that take biology. We do believe that we have a body of students who are ready and able to take these high school courses much earlier. And so, we want to extend those opportunities. And we're currently strategically trying to plan for which courses we're going to begin offering. As part of our leadership academy at the elementary level, we are introducing primary use program, which is the IB program for the elementary ranks. We currently have IB at five, at four of our high schools right now. And then, as I was mentioning earlier, there's a gap in the middle. The middle years program is the IB program that currently exists for that age group of students, the junior high group. And so, we would be interested in establishing a middle use program that would allow our students to have a pathway that takes them through this experience of IB from elementary ranks all the way through the middle school, uh, junior high years up to high school. And then finally STEM. We have the STEM Academy, and we have a STEM Academy at the elementary ranks that we're putting in place. We want to provide that pathway for our junior high students as well. And this would also include the need to add opportunities for them to engage in equipment at the junior high level from the STEM area. Career technical education is a major driver here in Arlington. There are some things that we would need to do at the high school level to enhance that programming. Shops and lab spaces for some of the foundational courses that we continue to teach at the comprehensive high schools. You know, at the CTC, that's primarily where we house the upper-level courses for our career tech programming. And we have several, we have many, many programs that kids participate at the comprehensive high schools and where labs don't already exist, we need to enhance some of those spaces. As was mentioned earlier by Ms. Powell, we have a lot of interest at the Career Tech Center. This year alone, we had over 5,000 course requests. We are at capacity. You could go over there any day of the week and you'd see kids all over the place, and that's something that we're very proud of. We had a very strategic target about that when we were constructing the CTC, that we wanted to have programs that interested our students and that we would have a full, we'd have it filled, and that we do have. And that's a good problem to have, but it doesn't mean that we need to expand. We also want to think about this idea of once kids go past their elementary ranks in the fine arts academies or the dual-language academies and move to junior high, where to next? Well, you have to go to high school. And in high school, we want, we don't want that to stop their experience. We want it to be just as rich as it was in their junior high and elementary ranks. And so, we need to begin planning and designing space for kids who have been in the academies all the way in the elementary ranks for when they do arrive at high school, which will literally be in just five, six years. It's right around the corner. It's kind of crazy. We just opened those schools. We also want to consider specialized learning programs at the comprehensive high schools for kids who are looking for possible direct entry points into the workforce. So, finding ways to partner with corporations throughout the metroplex and to establish programs that will- So finding ways to partner with corporations throughout the metroplex and to establish programs that will allow students to earn the certs and the skills needed to enter directly into the workforce from high school. And then for our special populations, specifically in special education, there is a need for post-secondary transition vocational training classes for 18-plus students at one of our existing high school campuses so we can service that group of students. And then district-wide, we have work that we're doing specifically in the area of special education for students with disabilities. Right now, we house, we house students in very specific programs at different parts of town. What we're working on is trying to provide a full continuum of services to students with disabilities at the schools that are within their neighborhoods so that in most situations where it's not the, it's more the exception than the rule, that they would not need to travel to other places to receive their services, but they would be able to receive their services at their home schools. This would require some, some, some space. Right now, we do have a need to identify appropriate space for specialized staff. And there are some examples on the slide, like diagnosticians, speech pathologists, LSPs, where they can do their work while they're at, at these schools. There is also a need for us to think about the types of furniture and devices that are available to students as they're in their learning space. And this is district-wide. We have a new learner, learning framework, the active learning cycle that we are implementing across the system. It does put the learning ownership in the hands of the students and the teachers do become facilitators. And so because of that, if you were to go into a classroom where it's taking place, you'll see students collaborating in groups, working with one another. And because of that, you need to have opportunities for teachers to adjust what the environment looks like so they can have access to those spaces in meaningful ways. So some examples that that may include are desks that are more trapezoid, electronic tablets, ways that, basically furniture and things that you can begin to manipulate to create the space that's needed for whatever project or things that the kids happen to be working on at the moment. We also need a centralized location for our parent-oriented programs. We have a really strong parent engagement department. And we have families in transition. We have a language placement center where kids go to be tested to identify what types of services they need. We have assessments for audiology that are provided. Our goal would be to provide a location that's centralized where parents can go and do a one-stop shop and receive all the needs that they have in one location rather than having to travel throughout the city to try to find the, the services for their, their students. The professional development center is something that's very popular. We use it not only here in the district to do a lot of our professional learning, but we also have many members of the community who like to leverage that space. It is full. It, we don't have enough space at the PDC to do all the work that we need to do. And so we're recommending that there be an expansion so that we have more rooms to provide professional learning to meet the needs of our, our growing staff. And then finally, meeting spaces that are integrated into the new construction. So as we, as we work on enhancing the, the educational facilities throughout the, the district, that we provide more spaces for people to meet, to collaborate, to be taught in professional learning experiences outside of just the PDC but other parts of, of the district. Any questions?
Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Trustees have questions on programming? Mrs. Mays?
Thank you, Dr. Rice. On the last slide that we just talked about, the meeting spaces, integrating those meeting spaces, would there be some uses for this as we continue to try to reach out with partnerships with different groups? Like our Dads for Excellence, other outside organizations that are wanting to help and do things for our students to allow them a place to actually meet and talk about that partnership?
Absolutely. So it, the spaces in the schools where not only teachers can collaborate, where people from the community outside can come who are there volunteering and working with the school to help the students, yeah, for sure.
Very good. And just clarification on the, the furnitures and fixtures. Are those, along with the collaborative spaces, are, are you looking at essentially trying to do more to address the, the different learner types as far as auditory, kinesthetic, visual learners? Is, does that, is that incorporated into this as form and academic?
I mean, when, when teachers are planning for learner, for instruction in the classroom, those things are taken into consideration even today. The focus primarily for these types of spaces in terms of furniture, the main focus that we focus on are the early childhood areas. That focus group that Cindy had talked about, where we brought in primary grade teachers into the room. We really want to understand like what is the kind of furniture that you need or to have more flexibility so that you could pull small groups, work with kids in guided reading, allow them to collaborate with each other, so it's more designed around that. Right now, if you were to go into our elementary schools, we have very, in many cases, we have traditional furniture and teachers do their best to try to create spaces where kids can collaborate with each other. In the primary grades, they really need more, more ways to allow kids to be more mobile and to move around, yeah.
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So in addition to that, I think an important part of the furniture, especially at the early childhood, is to, to set a classroom standard for AISD that really aligns with what we're trying to accomplish with that age group. Today, there is no classroom standard. So a classroom standard, like our STEM labs, we were very purposeful and we said every campus, and this is the standard. Technology has classroom standards. It would be really important to have an early childhood standard for AISD that is aligned to the outcomes, the report cards, the learning, and the experiences we want students to have. And that, that's the big lever for, for this section in, in terms of furniture.
Okay, thank you. And we have one more. Mr. Hogg?
Thank you. Sorry, Dr. Rice. I was looking to push a button. Forgot it was automatically on. Thank you, Dr. Wertz. Anyone who's walked through a elementary school lately, you know the difference in the seating of what students are doing. Especially you can automatically tell kindergarten classrooms versus any of others, you know? I, I think we've all donated enough to, donors choose on flexible seating arrangements for Ellis Elementary and that. Is that where we're looking to go? And, and I, I think it's the balance of a district allocating set standards on there, but also somewhat of a teacher choice of how they're teaching and how they're, they're driving to stations and those type of things. Is, is that where we're trying to allocate? Because I know if you asked almost majority of our elementary teachers, they would all say, how do I get flexible seating? How do I get into this, this area? How do I get stations set up over in my whole class without them funding it on their own? Because that's what a lot of them are doing currently right now.
That, that's in essence what it is. I think when, when it comes down to establishing the standards, the voice of that teacher population will be leveraged strongly. Because that's in essence what, what primary grade teachers are saying is they want to have the opportunity and the ability to have flexible space in their classroom. Most of the, many primary grade teachers need tables. They need flat surfaces for their kids. And they need to be able to move those around in different ways. And so, yeah, it would be like Dr. Cavas was mentioning, where we would establish a standard for the primary grades and we would leverage the voice of that teaching population to help us establish that standard so they can do that.
I love the parent engagement center. Place for people to come in, bring those items, one place, kind of a one-stop shop somewhat. What about also, and I know we've talked about this in the past, you know, is you can never keep up with technology. We know that, right? You know, no matter what you do. But I do think, and we've talked about it in some of our newer schools we've built of, you know, teachers being able to have somewhat video conference rooms for parent engagements so that parents don't necessarily always have to come in for that parent-teacher meeting. There's a little high, a little more high-tech of, you know, listen, let's be honest, we have some parents that can't make it in. So how are we enabling those teachers to be able to virtually connect, save time for the teacher, save time for the parents, but still create that connection, which sometimes we miss on? Is, is, I know we're probably going a little bit into the weeds here, but it just, are we thinking?
That ability actually already exists. It's just a matter of the teacher choosing to do it. We all, we have the technology actually here in the district to actually facilitate those meetings. I've, I'll, my, I myself often have my own meetings with my people who are all spread across the district virtually. Teachers can do, we actually have some that do those kinds of things. It's, the tools are in place to do that if they want to, yeah.
I, I would just add, Mr. Hogg, that, that, that would be one of those standards for either some of these spaces or for every school. And we could set that as a, as a very clear standard because you're right, Dr. Wertz, they can do that, but it is.
Having a really set, you know, we've even talked about when brainstorming ideas, do we get GM, one of our largest employers, to set up a virtual conference room for them to say, all your parents, instead of having to leave the line and go to that parent-teacher meeting, take 15 minutes off and go have that teacher conference right there. And sometimes it's helping that connection. And I do think that connection is growing. But also going a next step further, as, you know, we've started now making eighth graders take virtual learning classes, those type of things. How are we building those types of pieces in so that on some of these classes that we don't have enough to fill a full teacher spot, we have some virtual learning in some of those places? Because as, as much as people may not like it, that's a growing sector. And for some specialized classes, especially at the high school level, it totally makes sense. Are we maybe getting into the weeds too much here, but thinking through, through that process of this?
Yes, and I think, I think that's, that's part of then you'll hear from technology in terms of how they reframe some of their innovative grant program to, to support some of that. But that's also one of those standards of technology that we should explore. I think that's part of this exploration is what are the next needs for our district and how can we best support them?
And as we explore these, this is a time where we have to be willing to say, what building do we sell? What building do we get rid of? Where do we make those advancements? Is this the right building? Do we build, because we've got central office spread, spread out all over. Do they consolidate into a parent engagement center? Those type of things is, is the process going? I appreciate y'all taking that deep part look at this.
Excellent points, Mr. Hogg. All right, I don't see any other lights indicating questions at this point. You're dropping the mic. You're leaving. Great. Onto facilities, Mr. Horn.
Good evening, thank you. Well, next month marks three years and there's no better way to, three years. No better way to learn a district than a full-on comprehensive facility assessment, right? So, so, yeah, we've, we've spent a lot of time this, this past summer and this past spring assessing all of the facilities. A huge team and, and Ms. Powell mentioned that there were, there's probably been 200 people or so that walked through all of our facilities and assessed them through different lenses. And the intent was to try to, to try to make sure we didn't miss anything. With that many people looking at, at schools and facilities or systems throughout those schools, if I, with all my experience, I'm still likely to miss something. So having somebody like David Lewis walk through them with us at times, looking at his kitchens and so forth. He sees things and maybe it just says, hey, did you pick up that door hardware on that campus? And those kinds of things help. It helps all of us to be more informed. But I can assure you that the full team here at Arlington ISD has, knows their buildings better than they ever have before. So, so we feel very confident in what we put together for you. I'll just begin to go through, this, this is the lens that we looked at all of our facilities through. Obviously, safety and security is, is paramount for us and it should always be at the top. Instructional programming, as Dr. Wertz mentioned, we, we listened to his team a lot to understand what it is that he sees is coming in the future so that we can understand how those buildings might be adapted. And, and we say that when you talk about master planning, in my world, it's, it's looking at that building and looking at the site holistically to understand where we might put an addition, for example. So that it didn't impact an addition that we might need in a different way down the road. Or parking additions and drive additions and things like that. So that's why it's really important to look at a facility assessment in this manner and not just with a real short lens of, of five years, but to look out further. And I'll talk more about that here briefly. Obviously, aging condition, Mr. Hibbs, you talked on that and I'll talk more about that and answer your question here at the end. And then ADA accessibility, that's not just, it's not just inside a facility or on a playground. It's, it's from the moment you drive onto that site and you park your car, making sure that there's adequate number of parking spaces to, to serve everybody. Making sure they can get from that parking space up into the building and around the building from level to level, from cafeterias and kitchens and so forth. And so we look at, we look at that quite extensively. Educational adequacy is whether or not kit, clinics are appropriate size and, and whether or not the cafeteria might be sized properly or the kitchen sized properly. So, or whether or not you've got the right-sized classroom for kindergartners versus third graders versus, versus 10th grade student. And then operational efficiencies, more or less, that's just, again, the mechanical side of things. Are we operating a building as efficiently as we can? Are all the systems in tune with one another? Do they support one another, whether it's lighting, whether it's sound for PA and that sort of thing? So you, you don't want those systems competing with an HVAC unit that's overly loud and so forth, so. And then exterior enhancements, we oftentimes forget this or we don't, we, we save this to the very end and it's at the end here. But I can assure you that's not, because it's unimportant, but most of our parents or many of our parents don't ever leave the drive, right? And so it's important, if they form that perception of us based on what they see outside, it's really important to make it look nicer so that they, they understand that that's not just, it's not just indoors, but it's outdoors as well. And that can be everything from just the, a front flower bed to the, to the playground and how well it's taken care of or how well the condition of the fencing around the playground and so forth is. And then too, we, we still have some other things that I'll point out here. Most notably though, things like marquees for messaging to drivers as they drive by and canopies over playgrounds so that the play equipment's not too hot or that the kids have shade on a playground to, to find some respite. And then this kind of gets back to this first point on conditioning lifecycle assessment. So really, we, again, we want to make sure that we look at these buildings from the standpoint of, of how, how well they can be maintained or how well they can, they can continue to function. The, the reality is, is that architects, when they design a building, they design a building for a 50-year lifecycle. But we all know that we expect them to go longer. So the key to making sure that we maximize that, that lifespan is to do regular maintenance and preventive maintenance and that sort of thing, just like we do in our homes, Ms. Powell mentioned. So if we just simply think we can build a building and we can forget about it and say, well, it's good, then we're, it's very, we're, we're going to have a short-lived building. And so what we're trying to do is take those buildings that we might need to consider replacing and, and, and give that our consideration. But where I can extend the life of a building, even if it's 50 or 60 or 70 years old, sometimes buildings, just like us, they have good bones, right? And so just with a little bit of, with a little heavy renovation, we can extend that and, and end up extending the life and the investment that we have in, in the buildings in our district. In the middle of that slide, you can see again that the consultants that we, that we really focused in on, these, these consultants developed truly in-depth assessments of our facilities. Stan Tech and Corrigan split up our auxiliary buildings and our athletic facilities and our secondaries and our primary schools and did a thorough examination of those buildings. And the intent there was to have a third-party look at those buildings, much like we did internally and with a, with a different eye from a different professional. And just make sure that we didn't miss something or that, because it, it, it happens again. And so they're, the professionals, they do it not only in this district but in others all over the state. And so they help us to make sure that we're, we're on cue. And of course, people like the Roof Consultant, Armco and Glen Engineering, they perform a very vital function for us because those, those two components that they're, that they're looking at are foundational. The foundation of the building, the foundation of our drives and sidewalks and so forth and the roof above us. Without a, without a good roof in place, then everything we do on the inside can be lost, so. And then finally, moving down through, we, we looked holistically at athletics, all of our facilities to make sure that we had equity and to make sure that we were giving the kids the very best playfield experience, that they have working scoreboards and things like that. But we also know that there are other facilities in and around our stadiums like Wildman and Cravens where we have concession buildings and ticket booths and press boxes and bleachers and so forth that need to be maintained or need to be improved in some way. And so all the way down to a flagpole on the field, you know, so. And then finally, our auxiliary facilities, we, we, oftentimes we forget to do those things. We push those off. But we're a very big district and we have a very big transportation department. And Mr. Hill needs a lot of space for a lot of buses and we have, and with those buses come cars for parking. And so that facility, while we have a really, really nice-sized piece of property, we, we have very antiquated buildings and we're very spread out and very inefficient. So looking at that and then other needs like where we store textbooks, how we store our records, giving those, those departments adequate space as well to grow and to maintain what they have to maintain. And then our food service, again, at the bottom, but very important. You know, we, we, we need to take time to make sure that Mr. Lewis has the proper facilities to not only keep frozen foods properly, frozen foods properly, but he's, literally, his department is just sitting on top of itself, and he's outgrown that building he's in in a lot of ways. Again, this is a comprehensive assessment. And back to your question a minute ago, when we look at this, it would be, again, very short-sighted if I looked at facilities with a five-year lens. Because I might look at a building, for example, and say, "This building needs new ceilings throughout." And if I just put new ceilings throughout a typical elementary school, that number's about $400,000 to do that. And if I do that without considering that I may need to go ahead and replace the lighting, or that I may need to put a fire sprinkler in it, or I may need to put a fire alarm in that building, then if I do that in the next bond, with those other additions, I have to do what? But replace the ceiling again. So we want to look at what our needs are 15 years out, so that we can say, if we're planning to do a fire alarm or put in a new ceiling, I may want to push those two together, and whether it's in this bond program or a second or a third, make sure that we're not spending our money twice and three times, does that make sense? So that's the importance of doing a facilities assessment for a five to 15-year look. And then when you're looking at what we've included, new, or potential new buildings, we've looked at the need to have a replacement junior high school, two replacement elementary schools at this time. And then some new facilities, like Dr. Wertz mentioned, we've added four early childhood centers, Phase Two for the Ag Science Center, and we did just finish that, but that's bursting at the seams with kids who both have animals and kids who don't. And then, of course, the service center replacement, as I mentioned earlier, to try to get some efficiency and increase capacity for transportation and security and so forth. And of course, with that comes property acquisition for a number of those facilities. Then we began to look at what are common needs across all schools, and what impacts all schools. And of course, at the top, of course, is security. And some people say, "Well, what is a high-security key system?" Well, it's just a, it's a protected key system. Our key system is 25 or 30 years old, in some cases, older than that, on certain buildings. And we want a key system that can't be taken down to Home Depot and copied. And so every so many years, you need to improve that and replace that key system, so that you make sure that you don't have your master keys out in the hands of just any citizen or student that might be out there. And then finally, again, just a couple, I'll hit a couple of other high points. You can read the list, but restroom renovations are critical. You know, to have a building that's 50 or 60 years old and never ever renovated the restrooms, that's a key source for smells, gases and things like that, that leak through pipes and cause buildings to smell. And so you need to improve those, just like we would in our own home. Replace fixtures, replace partitions, and so forth. Kitchen renovations, I can just tell you that it's amazing what David Lewis does in our kitchens. They're woefully small, and he can defeat as many kids in those kitchens as he does with, in some cases, a third of the space that's required by standard, is just amazing. So that's another area we'd like to focus on, obviously. And then accessibility, I mentioned this a couple of times already, but accessibility throughout, making sure that we have parking and access for all of our patrons and all of our students, so that they're not waiting in the wings, so to speak. And then next, so we'll look at kind of the groups of the schools at each grade, at each level. At the elementary campuses, these are just a couple of high points. Obviously, our K-Pods, we talked about temporary buildings on sites, but our K-Pods are essentially temporary buildings sitting on the ground. And they have about a 20-year lifespan, and they're over 20 years old now. And so we're getting to experience some challenges with those, and it's important to, that's where we have our smallest children, and it would be good to have those buildings be a little bit more robust, but also be connected to our main building, so that they're not leaving the safety of the main building to go outside and then to their class space. And then, of course, our gymnasium replacements, as you see there, it's not about replacing every single gym in the district at the primary level, but we have a lot of our gymnasiums are activity spaces, really. And you can't play basketball very effectively in those without the ball hitting the ceiling, or volleyball and so forth. So we have a need to have a larger gymnasium that functions better for all the kids, whether they're in kindergarten or sixth grade. And then, of course, playground enhancements, we've talked about that. But that's really not so much about just, do they have a swing set? But is everything on that playground accessible and functional for all kids? In other words, have interactive PlayStations? And does it have an all-weather rubber surface? Does it have the cover over it so that they can get some relief from the sun and so forth? When it's done right, it becomes, and they're already buzzing like a beehive all the time, but it's just a lot more fun for the kids, and it's great when all the students can engage in it together. So that's what that's about. And then educational adequacy, we talked about that, but again, are our libraries, are they media centers, or are they an old-style library? Are our clinics large enough to have enough cot space and so forth to function for the school they're in? At the secondary level, I'll just highlight a few of these things, but we've talked a little bit about the junior high, Fine Arts and Dual Language Academy, the same for the high school level. And then, of course, auditorium finishes. We've done a really great job, and thank you, we've been able to improve. And we're improving currently a number of the high schools from the standpoint of what the kids use every day on stage, the things that impact their learning, and whether it's rigging systems, lighting systems, sound systems and the like. But there's our houses, our auditorium houses are in dire need of improvement, whether it's new seating in some auditoriums, and we've done a little bit of that. That's one of those things that wasn't necessarily called for in the bond program, but a couple of the schools, we've added that to that with some funding we had available. And so, as Ms. Powell mentioned earlier, but again, painting and finishes in the space, new ceilings, new lighting in the house, new carpet on the floors. We're doing what we can, but it would be great to renovate all of them and bring them up to a modern, more modern look. And of course, fine arts additions, it's our band programs and our orchestra programs and choir programs are just busting at the seams. And in some cases, it's needed that we have maybe a larger band addition, band hall addition, and then renovate the other spaces, so that those other programs can move into a larger band hall or a larger orchestra hall and so forth. So that's what that's about. Obviously, we've talked a little bit about career and technology renovations. And then, of course, in the athletic world, this is more about improving, replacing tracks. Tracks have been down for 10 or 12 years, or turf fields at some of the stadiums that have been down now for well beyond what their expected life should be. And so while they look good sometimes from the stands, when you get out on them, they don't meet the standards that we have to maintain for safety and so forth. So it's about every eight to 10 years, you have to replace tracks and football turf. And so we've got that placed in here, as well as athletic lockers. We've done a lot within our facilities, but sometimes, again, 60-year-old lockers just need to be replaced and instead of just trying to repair them routinely and so forth. And so with all that said, this is the grand total. So for our new facilities, you can see a total of $253,486,549. With our property acquisition, we've allocated $13 million. And for all of the other facility needs and the soft costs, we're at $820,284,865 for a total of $1,866, pardon me, $1,867,717. Just, you can read it. I'm just going to let you read it. That number gets too long for me. But exactly. So with that, I'll answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Horn.
Certainly.
Very much. Mr. Hibbs?
Okay, Mr. Horn, now I get to...
Now you can ask that question, right? It's always great to know the question is advanced.
Yeah, absolutely, right? Okay. I am not going to mention any schools that we may, certainly, say that we'd raise and start over. So let's say Crockett Elementary. Everybody's going to say, "We're going to tear down Crockett Elementary." And they're going to say, "Where's that located?" Yeah, absolutely. Grant Perry's got that problem. No, okay. So I know that some districts have gone to the point of, say, building a junior high, knowing that they need to have a new junior high to come online. But at the same time, they know that they need to raise one. And at that point, before moving new students into that new junior high, they'll take one year, that they'll just bust the students from the one that needs to be raised and start over. I mean, is there any thought in saying, "Okay, you have land acquisition. This is the process." How would you go about that process?
Certainly. There's a number of ways that you can do that. In some cases, you have schools that are large enough at an elementary level, where you might be able to double up, or you might be able to put a group of, a certain group of the kids at this school and a certain group over here. If you've got two schools that are a little bit underserved, that's one way you can do that, say, at the elementary level. It's harder at the secondary. You can also build that new school, if you have land, and build that school, if it serves the same area, and then begin to move those kids to that new school. Once it's complete, take the old school and either repurpose it or raise that building, and use that site for something else.
Okay. I'm going to kind of throw a monkey wrench in this whole thing. And Dr. Wertz, this would be something that would be back to what you were discussing with, as far as curriculum and buildings. Because you did mention that, you know, we've got the academies coming in, going in junior high, high school. As these groups will go up, there'll be, need to be new planning, new thoughts there. In any of these discussions, like Dr. Wertz, have you been talking with the superintendent and saying, "Hey, we need to look at maybe moving to a certain center for a certain grade"? Are we saying, are we, we're going to stay with our same model that we have in place?
So we, this was referenced earlier from one of the other questions, in that the way we're designing the future programs, there would be schools within a school. So there would be no need to add a building or to create a separate school, or to even do what we're doing with Wimbush, which is to redistribute students and then repurpose the building completely. Trajectory for the Fine Arts Academies at both the junior high and high school levels would house those students within the traditional schools that are there, so they'd be like a school within a school.
So a perfect example of what you're talking about would be like what's happening at SAM with their ninth grade.
A similar idea, yeah.
So it's within the high school, but they have what is considered a ninth-grade wing or center.
Except for what would happen is, and I'll give you an example. So you would pick school XYZ, we'll just say that, and they have their traditional student population. You would infuse that population with a set of students who are part of the academy, and they would be housed in that school and be full-fledged members of that school. The STEM Academy at Martin would be a great example of how I could explain how that...
So if we moved a second STEM academy, it would be the same thought within a school within a school.
Yeah, none of the programs that we're designing at right now, that we have plans for outside of Wimbush would require any redistribution of students or the construction of a new facility. They would all be housed within the schools, including the two that we're doing right now, which is the Leadership Academy at Crowe and the STEM Academy at Piercey. Those are also within their own schools.
Okay, and you feel like you would have the capacity at one of the high schools to do the very same thing with the fine arts programming?
There may need to be enhancements, but it wouldn't, it would not require the construction of a new building or the repurposing of an entire facility.
I'm holding it to a lot of questions.
Yeah, no problem.
So specifically to the high school, it would require, not a new high school necessarily, but it would require some significant addition to house students. If you think about the cohort as they progress up, and then as they become four-years, you know, freshman through senior, it's a good volume of students, about, what, 600?
650.
Students that are coming up eventually, right? So it would require addition to a school, but not, as Dr. Wertz said, not another school.
Right. And we do realize that we have a couple of schools that are completely landlocked, but then we have other campuses that we have considerable amount of space, so that's doable.
That's correct. That's doable. And also, in terms of the enhancements, one thing to keep in mind is that with our dual-language Fine Arts Academy students as an example, we will obviously have the Fine Arts Center that will also have classrooms. And that will also house specialized learning, very similar to the Career Tech, obviously not to that volume, but very similar to Career Tech, where students would be receiving specialized learning, spending a good portion of the day perhaps at the Fine Arts Center. And so that's also programmed into this kind of combination of facilities.
The reason I'm saying this is obviously it's exciting. There is new opportunity that we're talking about within this. I remember as coming onto this board, the thought of a CTC, you know, a Career Tech Center, was not even on the table. It happened. It came about, it came about because of the bonds and the forward thought of this board and the administration. These things are going to continue. There's going to be these new aha moments and thoughts of, "Here's another opportunity that we can give." And I appreciate the fact that you've already taken this into consideration. And from that standpoint, you know, there's a lot of excitement about the potential. You know, sometimes the number is daunting. I was laughing because I know it was hard to get out $1 billion. That's a lot of thought would take place in the next 15 years. So with that, I appreciate your time. Thank you for your questions or answers.
Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. And I think Mr. Horn drew the short straw to put that first big number out there.
It came out before me, but it didn't. So, hope Ms. Powell, I had my box ready, though, if y'all need.
Mr. Chapa?
Thank you, President Reich. I want to walk through some of the thinking behind a few of the things that you've highlighted, because I assume if it's in here, you're really kind of saying it's a need, not necessarily a want. This is what, you know, some of this stuff is left over from the 2014 bond, which the can's been kicked even further down the road there. So I want to start with the K-Pod replacements. And just what, when you talk about a K-Pod replacement, what are we talking about? Just maybe doing an extension and enclosing those in some way with a hard physical structure, so that you can get to the K-Pod without going outside the building? Or are we talking about actually, you know, knocking down K-Pods and doing like a full extension to include those classrooms?
Certainly. The K-Pods, it would be a full raise of that structure. So we raise that structure and build that with, perhaps in conjunction with a new gymnasium, where we can get some economy from building both together. And so, but the intent would be to raise both the Activity Center, the metal building that we use as a gym, and the K-Pod structure, and then build a new addition onto the campus.
Okay. And how is it determined that a K-Pod structure in particular is, you know, you mentioned that some of them are 20 years old, but I've been, you know, I've been through a fair number of elementary schools and K-Pods. And at some of those schools, the K-Pods actually, when you're inside them, I mean, both on the exterior and interior, seem to be in much better shape than the rest of the building. And I imagine that in many of these schools, there are going to be buildings that are going to remain there. We're not talking, these aren't the two Crockett Elementaries that we're thinking about getting, you know, raising to some extent. So how do we make that determination that that is something that is going to be raised and replaced, but not necessarily a main structure that is much older and, at least to my eye, and much more deficient than the K-Pod?
Right. First of all, I'd say thank you, because we work really hard with those K-Pods to make sure they function and that they're in that condition. But they are a, they truly are a pre-manufactured building that's on the ground. They don't have concrete foundations under them. So it was intended to serve a purpose and to get us out of a tight spot many years ago. And so, but they had, they've reached the end of their life expectancy. They do look good, because they have a brick facade around them, and that helps to kind of preserve that. And then we work very hard on the inside to make sure we keep the carpet new, and we replace that wood floor and so forth. But they're really not sound structures that we should, that we should continue to use for a long period of time. So, but I do agree with you. And that kind of ties to a question that Mr. Hibbs asked earlier, and I think I can answer both at the same time. So when we look at our structures, the older structures we have out there that are 60 and 70 years old, again, some of those structures, as we assess them, we, the minute we walk through, we have multiple elevations, high and low, that are not necessarily, they're very difficult for people with ADA needs to travel. But also, we may have foundations in one building that we know are compromised, and in another older building, it's not. And so it gets back to that question you had earlier about, and I answered, when I said, "Some buildings just have good bones, and they just, they can be 70 years old, but I can literally gut that building out and make it new on the inside, put a good roof on top of it, and get another 30 years out of that building, very functionally." And then there are some that I can't do that. They've just deteriorated because of maybe the environment around them. Maybe they're too low on a site, and the moisture has deteriorated the concrete foundation or the walls and things like that. We might have a lot of movement in the soils that's made those foundations unstable. And so those are the types of buildings we look at first that we... And so those are the types of buildings we look at first uh that we might need to raise and replace. Uh and, and the, the best indication of that is as we assess those buildings, especially the older ones, we're looking at how much money does it take to bring that up to the standard that we might have in a new building like Peach or McNutt or A- Patrick's or A- Pa- Patrick or Adams and so forth. And if that value exceeds fifty percent of the cost to build a new one, it doesn't make sense for me to continue to, to put that kinda money and then in the next bond, but next bond program, put another two or three million in it and so forth, because it would be cheaper for us in a very short period of time to just build a new one and not have to deal with the, the ongoing uh maintenance needs or deficiency needs that we would have, so, does that help?
Yeah, that, that's very helpful and it, and to, and that segues, segues into my next question, but to wrap up the, the K-Pod question, that's very helpful to me because it says to me appearances can be deceiving.
That's right.
And that's helpful to know because, you, you know, Mr. Hogg said that he, he wanted to maybe, you know, spit out some water when he saw the big number there. It, but it, it's, it is a big number, but it indicates to me that down the road, we're gonna have to make some tough decisions as to what gets included and what doesn't, and so that is very helpful to know.
Yes.
Because it sounds, you know, when I think about the K-Pods and I see the K-Pods, to me, outside looking in, that maybe is for me further down the list of when we have so much else that, that needs to go in here. But hearing from you, what actually um goes into making that determination and how those K-Pods were constructed to begin with, maybe that goes back a little bit further up the priority list for me.
Certainly.
Um, segueing on the last thing, I really appreciate your detailed explanation of how you assess the um, you know, what, what has good bones and what, what ain't cutting it anymore? And if you could, have you guys thought much, I, I'm sure you have, and walk me through the process of how will you go about determining which of the two, you've, you've got two highlighted so far, which are the two Crockett's or two, which, how are we gonna pick the Crockett's? And uh, and separate them from schools that, that are maybe almost there, but we're gonna, we're not gonna include them within the two?
Right, it, it's, it's the old age divide and conquer, really, more than, more than anything, we've loo- we've taken all of our facilities, first at the primary level and then the secondary level and prioritized them in a categorization of one to five, Roman numeral one through five. And so, and that's representative of the number of years that it might have left that, as we see it. So uh when we look at the primary schools, there's a category of schools that's in that Roman numeral one that has between, as we would indicate, maybe zero to ten years of life. So, so where, and then it's, and then it's, say eleven to twenty and twenty-one to thirty and so forth. And you can imagine where a Patrick and Adams and a Peach and McNutt fall, they're in that group five, right? And then I won't necessarily say, well, he's in group one, but we've assessed that group one in there. Let's say that there are twelve schools in that group one. To your point, what I have to do then is I have to look at, at those schools very in-depth and, and understand which ones might have good bones that I could then invest significant dollars in and push them out of group one and into group two or three, so that I'm now at twenty to twen- twenty to thirty years' life for those. And that usually leaves me with five, six, seven schools perhaps, that now we have to start to say, okay, which of these five or six or seven schools can I, can I push even out to just ten years so that I can manage this and bite this apple the right way? And, and hopefully I'm only left with two elementaries that really need to be replaced right now. And, and that's kinda where we find ourselves, is that we, we think there are two that, that really are in that top category that need to be addressed right off the bat. And then we can take three or four and put them in the next bond, and three or four in the next bond, and that's my nine or ten schools that we need to raise and replace. And now all the schools that we have are at least out into that, say, twenty to thirty-year timeframe where we can begin to more strategically plan the, how we deal with those. Uh because we, we do have a lot of schools, we had the, this fast-growth period where you had, we had fourteen prototypes that were all built kinda right there together. Well, they don't need to be replaced right now, but there will be a time, say twenty years from now, when we're gonna be talking about those schools and, and considering whether any of those need to be replaced. So we need to really address that category one now, so that that doesn't stack up on us in year twenty. Does that help?
That, that helps a lot, and so when I, and correct me if I'm wrong, what I'm, what I'm hearing you say is that, yes, there may be two, and maybe that number isn't set in stone, but there will be a, a finite number of elementary schools that we decide to do the raise and replace approach. But there will be other schools that maybe are of a similar vintage that have good bones that will have substantial condition and lifecycle improvements made to them, to the point of maybe we strip them out and we leave the facade, okay? Because that, and that is important to hear for me in particular, because I feel like we have, and, and it's no secret, we have a large number of buildings in that fifty-plus-year time range uh or, or, you know, age that um they have significant structural or, or facility challenges. And it would, it appears that for many of them, we have kind of, for the best of intentions, kind of done what we can to keep those things going because we got a finite number of resources and we gotta, we gotta stretch it. Um, but I think that there are several of those that that approach is, is coming.
Yes.
It's reached its limit.
That's right.
And I would hate for them, those campuses to not be in the raise and replace category, but yet still need significant work, very significant work done. And yet we do sort of a more of a Band-Aid approach to kick them to that, to that next bond and whenever it is down the road. And we are still, with respect to those campuses, if you were to walk into them, compa- especially compared to some other campuses we have in our district, it's like going back into another time.
Right.
And so I am glad to hear you say that the condition and lifecycle improvements that you're proposing are not, what I understand to have been the primary mode for some of those campuses in the past, but much more substantial.
Sure.
So thank, thank you for, for putting that out there. And then my last approach, or my last approach, my last question, um can you elaborate a little bit on um the assessment findings with respect to the softball, um practice fields and complex?
That uh, what we, a lot of what we would know there, uh that we need to do has to do with just accessibility, making sure that we, we have accessibility to the fields properly, into the bleachers and, and that our facilities, and same, same as, as a regular school, that the restrooms have been renovated properly and they remain functional and clean and up to date. But then also there's other things that can be considered, it's not a decision I've made, but you could make the fields, turf fields, for example, in some way, so that they're more, so they're playable during all weather conditions if you wanted to. So there's a lot of things that we've looked at, uh even updating scoreboards, we've, we've done that at each of the high school campuses and, and all of our athletic facilities, with the exception of the junior highs because they're being replaced now. So that's, in, in, I guess in a broad sense, those are some of the ideas and things we've looked at.
Okay, thank you, cuz when it said com- complex and campus fields, I didn't know if, if we were sort of continuing our commitment to having the centralized complex for the softball program or if that meant there was going to be some work done to the complex to repurpose that for some, for something and then build out the campus fields to put them on par with?
It, it, it uh, it, that's not been fully fleshed out yet, but that, that particular complex obviously would continue to serve our, our girl softball program for a time. Uh, it also could become a part of a, of a larger development or in and around that site, perhaps be used for something different. So there's a, there's a lot of things we, that we could consider, but more importantly, while we have it, just making sure even that the parking lot is pro- properly sealed so that it doesn't deteriorate on us. So my goal was to make sure I had dollars in there to maintain it, but also to put enough in there that we might be able to repurpose some portion of it if we wanted to.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Horn, that's been very helpful.
You bet, thank you.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Chapa, Mrs. Mays. I think you keep turning yourself off.
Thank you, President Reich. Um, just very quickly, also Justin, those K-Pods are not even connected to the buildings.
Right.
And just having done so many PTA things, to your point, on the outside, it looks like it is just a regular building and then you get on the inside and you notice it's not quite, in addition to actually being separated from the building itself, so. Just to add to the K-Pod thing, um also, Mr. Horn, I believe this was before your time, but I do think that there are some people, maybe Justin, maybe um, yes, Mr. Willbanks out there. Remember when we were walking the roofs to give an assessment of what we thought for sitting on the, the committee that we were serving on? Whether we thought, is this something that needs to be changed? So I think we've come and it stream um a long way of how important we think it is to correctly assess and move forward over the last several years, so I just wanted to throw that out too. Um, I have to say, and I'm gonna say I'm saying this subliminally, but I'm really not, um when we talk about all of these programs that we're wanting to do and that we've added, we talk about everything being accessible to our students throughout the community, w- we can't do or increase those without talking about transportation. So I just really, just really, really am excited to see where the Transportation Department falls on this priority list. Um, because I, I think it's very important. Accessibility was a, a very important factor to me and I think that it's proven to be very beneficial to our students throughout the district, so I just really am excited to see about the transportation area. Um, also, you were talking about the um existing athletic facilities. Um, just, I, I loved that word, I think you said press boxes, did I hear that?
Yes.
Yes, press boxes, right, yeah, I thought I heard that. Um, also, for the restrooms and renovations, when I think of restrooms, I always think of like water fountains as well. I know it's not on here and that's probably in the weeds, but I, I usually think those things kinda go.
They are.
Hand in hand.
Absolutely.
And then I just wanna say um, thank you uh for all the hard work. I'll save my final comment for after we include our last piece, cuz this is going to go for everybody who's speaking. Um, for the estimate that you had the privilege to throw out, um.
I did my best.
I know, I know. I, I wanna point out one thing, um, this is, this is the beginning. We, the community has already voted and approved the trajectory movement that we've been on. Um, they've seen what that approval has done to help increase um opportunities and success for our students. So I, I'm glad that we're not initially getting up um of just talking about the dollars. Uh, but I think Mrs. Powell said it earlier, that we're looking at the full needs.
Right.
Of what we need, and that should always be the starting point. And then we move from there, because at the end of the day, um when we talk about, you know, our students, a hundred percent graduate, our expectations are very high. The demand that we have of our students, of our staff, of administration is very high. So I just think that this kind of reflects what the expectations are here in Arlington, so I'll just throw that piece out. I guess I didn't have any questions.
Okay.
Well, thank you, Mrs. Mays. Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Reich, well, I, I think all of my questions have been answered too and, and I appreciate everything uh that Ms. Mays just added. Um, and I, I just want to add one thing, and that is, in your presentation, you talked about um getting things in the right order. And, you know, getting these um improvements up to facilities or whatever uh in the proper order so that we're not tearing something up that just got built or, or, or whatever. And that's got to be kinda tricky, so I appreciate uh the emphasis on that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Walton, Mr. Hogg.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Reich. Um, Mr. Horn, let me just commend your staff, cuz we've made lots of changes that affect the long-term cost of the district. And as some of these new things come on board, are we taking into account, you know, we can talk bond, we can talk this big number, but when you start talking real money, you start talking long-term recurring cost. Um, example, ten-year replacement on turf, ten-year replacement on tracks, um band uniform. I mean, uh, different things of that K-Pod that are getting replaced. Um, you know, would I say it, it was a fix back then, was it a little short-sighted maybe to do that? I don't know, I wasn't on the board, I wasn't around when they were doing that luckily, and I wasn't even listening, I was still in high school. So um, no real clue, but I do worry about those longer-term costs. We've done this some and we've seen some of the benefit of some solar. At uh, you know, when we put those in at the Ag Center, we flat-out knew solar would probably repay itself. We knew the wind turbine would not repay itself, but we also knew that was a teaching lesson.
Right.
For students, we know water reclamation. Um, in our world, this day and age, water's getting more and more expensive and more and more valuable. So as Mr. Chapa was talking about, and it came up on field turf, things of that nature, are, are, are we taking into account adding those to either new buildings or retro, also even retrofitting um older buildings? And I say it specifically from, my brain starts going, LED lights, less replacement, less maintenance workers that are having to do that, less injuries, cuz there are less time up on ladders, which reduces our workers' comps, claims in the long term. And so that's where I start thinking of an investment into retrofitting for some of those things can have a long-term payoff when none of us are possibly on this board, which I think is a good thing. Are we taking those things into account also?
App, absolutely.
Considering those as, as we're going with Ms. Mays said, starting with the broad picture first and then making some of those harder decisions as we come down.
Yeah, and absolutely we are, and, and you touched on a lot of different things, but uh we think about that in facilities, the very thing that you mentioned. You know, when it comes to replacing lighting, when we, when we're building a new building now or renovating a new bill, or renovating a building, an existing building, and we can go to LED lighting, it's, it saves us in our M and O budget um by decreasing the number of lamps that we have to buy. But it does also mean that I don't have to put a guy on that ladder all the time or.
That's right.
I don't have to put a custodian to do that very thing, because those.
You don't have a teacher complaining that the light's out and it, we've got a backup workload.
And all of the lights are consistent color and consistent brightness and so forth, so. And they save us a lot of money on the usage of those, so. So yes, we do look at everything like that, even the equipment that you are so gracious to, to let us buy for our people. You know, we, we no longer push, we do push mops, but most of the time we drive mops nowadays.
Yeah.
Because uh it's, it's difficult for three people to clean a hundred thousand square foot building without having a ride-on mopping machine, you know? And so uh it makes it so that we can be more efficient and we can make those buildings shine each and every night versus having to pick a night where we're gonna mop and a night where we're gonna vacuum and so forth. So we look at, we look at it from that standpoint, we also look at it from, you mentioned watering. Uh, Ms. Powell has uh, has allowed us to begin uh replacing our irrigation meters with smart meters and putting valves uh in place so that we take our irrigation off of the main water system, because when we have it on the main water system, we, for every gallon we use, we pay for sewage. And you don't wanna pay for sewage on water that's been used to irrigate the ground. So, so we're, we're looking at every opportunity to save cost and reinvest where that, where that investment pays for itself quickly, but saves us M and O dollars over the long haul and makes it easier for us to maintain our facilities, so. So yes, and then when you tack on top of that, the possibility that you could take a, a baseball field and make it turf and not be natural grass, so that I could cut down the amount of water uh that I put, that I put out there on the lawn, because water is probably the most expensive utility that we have now, in, in the sense that not the most, not the most volume of cost, but it's the, it increases, it's increasing at about fifteen percent a year. And so it's just, it's climbing and climbing and climbing, and so we have to be smart about what we're doing in, in every sense about where we're putting our dollars and how we're investing in our facilities and we're making, trying to make those wise choices.
And Mr. Horn, those are, you know, those things in a bond are not glamorous.
No, they're not.
You know, it's like, no one really wants to pay for heating and air conditioning, but everyone likes heating and air conditioning, right? And it's, it's kind of essential, you, you don't, really, we have to pay for roofs? Well, no one likes it when you're roof-slicking, so um from a long-term cost, I think those are things we have to take into account. We have to look in and say, what are these things? You know, as a board, we've talked in the past, you know, on new buildings, things like that, do we need LEED certifications? In the past, we ruled, we want the pieces of LEED, we don't necessarily need the official certification label on there um from the extra cost, but I, I would encourage, as we look at water reclamation, those type of things that can really pay off in the longer term, make our district more efficient and hopefully reduce some of those M and O costs um a- as, as a whole, as a long-term, and I appreciate you all taking that into account. And as we go through this process, I'll ask many more questions about um water reclamation and how we can reduce those costs to reduce our overall recurring cost.
Very good, thank you, Mr. Hogg. Um, I just have a couple of follow-ups on the elementary schools. So today's cost for an average elementary school is, is it probably around twenty-five million?
No, current, for a hundred thousand square foot elementary school right now, uh probably in and around the range of thirty to thirty-three million dollars.
Wow.
With, with, with all, everything involved.
And is that the number that's reflected in these estimates, or have you tried? I know Ms. Powell said it's too early to adjust for inflation, but.
No, they are, that's.
So thirty, thirty-nine. And are we, uh, and I'm not saying I'm a, a proponent for this or not, uh doing some type of a, a, a common design standard for an elementary campus so that we have one firm making one design instead of two firms with two designs and construction costs, et cetera?
Certainly, we talked about that relative to both elementaries and, and all four early childhood schools. Uh, we, it just makes sense to develop a prototype, and, you know, it might be a bit aggressive, you know, if we, we're trying to do a fourteen-school prototype again, but, but uh. But, but if we find the right design, and, and I, I think we've, we've touched on it a bit. When you look at a Patrick and an Adams, a McNutt, and those are, those are all very similar in style. They work very well on a tight site where real estate's, you know, at a premium. And, and they function well, you know, especially a school. Plus, I, I think Adams probably is one of the very best we have in the way it functions. The principal seems to think so. And so, so yeah, I think we would, we could settle on a style of building, perhaps something similar to those. Maybe pick the best of all of those and bring it together.
Good, good. And I, I would think, and this is probably more in Dr. Wertz's department, not that you have to jump up and answer a question, but I would think that the forecasting what that design standard looks like would also have to take into account, I think, some of the expansion of programming opportunities that we see from our academies now that we want to incorporate into the general process, general elementary process. Very good. All right. I don't see any other questions on the facilities, so let's move on.
Thank you.
Good evening. The good news is the technology bond package recommendations are not as expensive as facilities. So we're starting off on a, on a good note here as we trend forward. Now, well That is very true. That's very, that's very true. Obviously, we all know that technology in itself is something that changes rapidly. So it's hard often for us to project out, let alone a couple of years from now, especially five, five-plus years from today. But certainly, we do the very best that we can to, to do that projection. So it's really important for us to really continue learning on what we've implemented across the district as well as learning from those around us, industry, et cetera. So we have leveraged lots of, lots of various sources to help inform our work and ultimately the recommendation you see here tonight. From the leveraging of a district technology advisory committee, making up a cross-section of staff, community members, and students. In addition to surveys, individual meetings with specialized programs, envisioning with industry leaders and experts from across various technology areas. Through that feedback and data that we received, through the, through that committee work, we ultimately landed on these areas of considerations, as you can see here. We're going to talk briefly about each of those this evening. The first one is our infrastructure. This is a critical component of what we do as a part of our technology package. It kind of is the behind-the-scenes brains of our operation. It affords all of our staff and our students to be able to leverage the services that we offer and ultimately learn on a daily basis in what they do. If you remember correctly, the current bond package also encapsulates our safety and security components. We have funding wrapped into the 2014 bond package for that. We certainly want to continue that, and that is built into this portion of our recommendations. One of the interesting components that we have there is, we've actually taken time to think strategically about that aspect of our systems, because we've actually migrated a couple of our specialists from the Security Department over to the Technology Division, the ones that really oversee our cameras and all of our storage capacity, because they really layer under technology quite nicely. So it really affords us the opportunity to have an integrated approach with the Security Department, but also layer that in so we can really vision out and have quality, long-term solutions that will serve our district for a very long time as a part of this bond package. So I'm really excited about that new revamped partnership and integration efforts that we, we've done with the Security Department. In addition to that, as you can see, we have other areas there that we want to address as a part of our infrastructure, all the basic data and wireless, wireless equipment components. One thing I do want to point out that we haven't necessarily considered across our system before is something as simple as student badge unification. Currently, at the secondary level, all of our students receive badges, but we don't do it at the elementary level. So something we could consider, and that we felt was potentially a consideration here in the bond package, is to standardize that across the system. That way, we could have one unified badge for network services, for transportation, for food services. Also, take into account new standards that exist in regards to our card readers and door access. So there's lots of things that we will consider as we move forward. But that's certainly something that was interesting, that came kind of through our, our collaboration and, and thinking through what we wanted to potentially accomplish in addition to these other areas. The next bucket is replacement schedule. Currently, we historically have leveraged a five-year replacement cycle for all of our major components across our bond packages, from our networking components to our end-user devices at the district teacher and student level. The feedback we received from the committee has been quite clear. They seem very happy with our standard we put in place for our teachers and our students as it relates to our teacher standard of laptops, our K2 standard of iPads, and then our 312 standard of Chromebooks. So, you know, technology does evolve and change. You never know what devices might be available a few years from now. But at this point in time, we felt the need to certainly hold the course and continue moving forward with that recommendation. And, and we'll see what happens down the road a little bit. Another piece that we've had good success with in the current bond package are our PA system upgrades. We established a standard for all PA systems across our campuses. We didn't have funding to complete all of our campuses, so we've wrapped in enough money to, to be able to address the rest of our campuses as a part of these recommendations. And we'll continue to do printers, copiers, and our classroom AV systems as needed. Some of those can maintain, a lot of that is fairly new because of what we've just done with a lot of our work in the current package. So hopefully, a lot of those other items will be minimal that we have to address over the course of the next five years. But if we do, we have funding built in to account for that. Another bucket that we'd like to recommend are district standards. One of the major components we have in the 2014 bond package, as we mentioned earlier, was our classroom standards project. We really took the time to define that across the system for every single instructional space to be consistent and equitable to all of our instructional staff. We wanted to evolve that and enhance that, and ensure that we're doing that across the entire district, not just our classrooms. We have other non-teaching spaces from support staff to centralized staff that we need to address, and we have defined that within this to make sure that those are addressed. We're obviously going to continue to adhere to that standard at both our elementary and secondary campuses, and we'll have funding in this package to be able to address that. But there's just other areas that we wanted to focus on in addition to that, and making sure that we're, we're meeting that need as well. One of the things that I wanted to point out in this bucket is our secondary calculator program, something that we've spent really the last year or so with academic services partnering with, is developing the standard and ensuring that every student that participates in an Algebra I class has access to a calculator for state and local assessments, as well as everyday use at the campus. We historically have not funded that in a bond package, but we felt it was appropriate to do that here to ensure that every student participating in that course has access to a calculator. And then you'll notice the one last bullet on this slide specifically points out Adam, Adam, Adam Elementary, Adams Elementary. If you remember, that was a brand-new facility when we started the new bond package. So we want to make sure that they, all of their instructional spaces adhere to the standards that were put in place as a 24, 2014 bond package. Specialized programs and partnerships. We're all aware that we have specialized programs from our STEM program at Martin, as well as our collegiate high schools. We currently offer one-to-one initiatives at the, at those campuses. So we want to ensure that we have the funding to be able to support that for every single student, providing a student device for each of those programs. We also have talked a lot about other opportunities, academies that are coming down the pike, that we want to ensure that we have the ability to address those needs as, as they come about. So we've specked in funding in order to address those customized needs as needed strategically over time. The last item I'd like to mention is, is what we're tabbing Tech Forward. And I think of this as the evolving or next iteration of our TI grant process. We have, we've really created two pathways for this program. It is, it would be a grant funding initiative over five years, and we have innovative learning experiences and a targeted one-to-one program. Obviously, with any program like this, you often think about what are the outcomes that you want to get out of this type of program? Clearly, we want to see that teachers are seamlessly integrating technology into student learning in an ongoing way. You know, we list once per week, but obviously, we want that as frequently as possible. We want to ensure that the teachers participating that are getting these grants, they're being held to a higher standard. We want them to become master technology teachers based upon those standards that are, that are defined. We obviously want to ensure that our students are demonstrating mastery in the core content in their elective areas, at least one per, per week, if not more frequently. The first pathway as a part of the Tech Forward program is innovative learning experiences. It is relatively similar to, to the TI grant process. We are going to be partnering hand-in-hand with academic services to make sure that we're revamping the application process and the requirements of that process, and also layering in additional layers of professional support as a part of that initiative. And finally, the one probably I'm most excited about really is a targeted one-to-one initiative, which is, which is something that, you know, a lot of people think about. There's lots of districts that offer one-to-one programs, but oftentimes, they just plunk it out there, and they really don't have a strategic plan on how that's going to be done across the system. We want to be very specific and strategic with where and how we do that, so that we have the, we're not only aligned with academic services, we don't, we have the right resources, our teachers are ready for a true one-to-one initiative, and ultimately, it has the biggest impact on the students themselves. So at this point, we've had a lot of conversation about having this opportunity as a part of the grant process, partnering with academic services with individual teachers and/or campuses that have been identified through that, for the active learning cycle process, and developing a phased approach on, on what that could look like. And what we think is, we'll get the most bang for a buck by partnering with, with that initiative through academic services. Obviously, there's a lot of detail still to work out. We're going to go through that process and determine what it could and should look like for it to be most successful, and layer in those extra supports. When we think about ongoing monitoring and, and assessment of these types of programs, we need to be thinking about what that means and what that should look like. And ensuring, and setting this up really for, to be as successful as we can be, and ultimately impacting students in a meaningful way. Here are some thoughts and ideas that we've developed at this point. As a guide, these will be continuing to be evolved as we have more conversations with, with collaboration with academic services, but obviously having ongoing assessments, continuing our collection of teacher and student data to help inform our decision-making process. How well, how well are things going? Learning walks, seeing it visually through our process, potentially requiring teachers to obtain specific certifications if you're going to be awarded one of these grants. Viewing and obtaining student artifacts, what does that look like? And having the ongoing conversation. So we're going to put an enhanced lens on this type of program to ensure that it's successful at the end of the day. And so I'm super excited about that potential opportunity to offer a strategic and targeted one-to-one, specifically in collaboration with academic services. Okay. So in summary, here is the amount of money, and it's less than facilities. Keep that in mind. But we have, keep that in mind. It's less than facilities. So obviously, this is evolving. We're going to continue to have ongoing conversations. We'll continue to prioritize our efforts as we go down the pike. But these, I think we've done a good job with the current bond package. We certainly want to leverage and continue to grow and expand our efforts and services. And at this point in time, these are based upon what we feel our needs are as of today. And with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Are there trustees with questions on technology, safety, and security? Mrs. Mace?
Thank you, President Rush. I just have a very quick question, and that's concerning security.
Yes.
Is there anything that, are we including anything additional, not knowing, or just to anticipate anything that could come down legislatively as far as security and school districts?
You know, I think our approach through the funding that we have, and we've been fairly open-ended with that. We've gone from, we have ample money in there to essentially replace our current systems if, if we choose to do so. I think we have the flexibility to, to scale out, whether it's buzzer systems or whether it's security cameras, to be able to grow that, additional licensing for cameras, cabling the complete infrastructure. We have enough funding in there to account for that. So if we, another piece that we have to account for also are specialized classrooms. So as the need arises to put equipment in those rooms, we fund that out of the bond package. So we have enough funding to account for that as well. Anything that might happen crazily through the legislature, it's hard to say what that could be. But from, from an infrastructure and architecture standpoint, I'm confident we have enough funds to account for ensuring that our system can grow and scale, I guess is the best way that I can put that, without an example. I think it's important, you know, with some of that coming over to the technology umbrella, we've really taken a lot of time to do a lot of auditing and understanding of how those systems have run in the past. And we're making some, we've really gone through and, and met with a lot of vendors to understand potential options, to make sure we're standardizing across what we put into place, as well as things that we need to consider. And so the, the amount of funding we put in for that, I think is appropriate to, if we felt the need to migrate to something different, we have the flexibility to do that. Yeah.
Thank you, Ms. Mace. So one question that I have on the Tech Forward, i- is that going to replace the TI grant process?
It would. It's kind of our phase-two approach of that. You know, I think we've, we've done it. I think the TI grant process has been great. I think it, you know, we're, we're looking at how we can do it bigger and better, and make a, a better, a bigger, more strategic and targeted impact through that process. So yes.
And so on that Tech Forward part, you've got $10 million allocated for the, the TI grants. Was it 3 million? Is that what you
5 million.
5 million.
So we allocate, so
Okay.
right now, obviously, we can think about that, and as we continue to have conversations, that obviously can change potentially. That was our first initial stab at that. As maintaining the five, we felt, you know, we wanted to do a one-to-one process strategically, but we felt like we had this whole other rest of the district that we wanted to make sure that we had opportunity for.
Sure.
So we felt the need to kind of keep that innovative learning piece, but also excited about doing that one-to-one piece.
Mm-hmm. Great. All right. Well, thank you very much. I think we're, we're done for the evening. We can all go home now. Oh, wait.
We got the newbie.
Let's hear about fine arts.
No, I'm serious. This is slide 51 out of 97. As you know, I've been here for 13 weeks, and that's just this meeting. So as an outsider to the district, it's really been fun to come into this and be able to really make an assessment of what's happened in the previous bond, and look at the priorities within that bond and say, ask some really good questions. Why did we do this? What was our goal for this? And, and so with that, I can report two really important things. One is that, that bond within the Fine Arts was executed with incredible fidelity. And I'm really impressed with the work that has happened before I got here, which leads me to the second thing, which is that this Fine Arts staff is second to none. Absolutely amazing, and I want to say that publicly because all of them, to a person, have just been so amazing with answering all of these questions and allowing me to go through that process. And I think through it, I think we've discovered some things ourselves, which I think have been a really good process. But that leads into how we approach the, the next phase of this, which is, what are we going to do in the future? And I think we have some really similar priorities as we, as we move forward. Access has obviously been a really important part. And so now we need to get more and more granular with that. And we look at access inside of programs, and we, we look at access at the very top of our programs. We look at access at the, at the beginnings and what all of those elementary schools look like, and, and how we have equity across the district in all of our programs, and that we're digging deep into some of our newer programs that have, that have just come online and looking at expansion. So we have a number of things, and I'll just run through these really very quickly. Uniform replacement schedule, something that's commonly talked about. This is, this is a consideration that we have. It's just a normal piece of, of business and operations. We're looking at marching band, drill team, and our concert uniforms. And those, as you know, are sort of on an eight-year cycle, and we will continue to look at those. Also, continued access, as I talked about, appropriate instrument storage. This is a really important thing. We've had an influx of instruments that have come into the district over the last few years. We have some additional instruments that we would be looking at. It's really important that we're looking and ensuring that we can maintain that asset for as long as it's supposed to live by making sure we're taking care of it exactly the way we need to take care of it. So the longevity of these instruments, making sure they go the distance, is really critical. And we need to make sure that we, that we have an eye toward that as we move forward. Within the visual arts, some amazing work Within the visual arts, some amazing work has happened. We do have some opportunities to better vertically align our equipment. That means when kids start programs, as they come out of the elementary schools and go into junior highs and those programs begin to diversify, that we have those same programs continuing all the way through the, the high school so that they're able, if they find that ceramics are really where they are, that they can do that at the high school level, whether that's pottery wheels or pug mills or kilns or whatever it might be, to make sure that we have the same capacities that we're, that we're need, that we need so that everybody can start those programs and finish them. With the dual language fine arts academies, we have a lot of considerations in here. Some have been brought up already. And so part of our considerations really is looking into the programming side of that, just ensuring that we're maintaining the, the access that kids have and the quality that they have as they, as they move forward. And so since you brought up a question, I'm going to stop here for just a second and, and just give you a couple of examples of things that are challenges that we have to look at. If, if we have, say, for example, an academy that's separated from, from school, so it's not a school within a school. And let's say we put 800 kids into that academy. Well, by U I L rule, when they begin to compete, they have to compete at the 6A level because we have 6A schools within our district. So you have to be very careful. If you peel off this small group, that we're not putting them in a situation where they can't be competitive because they don't have enough critical mass to create the size of the programs they need. It's just a consideration that we have to, have to, to take into account. So that's different from a dance program, which you can use, you can, you know, do with a smaller group of people or a piano program, which is a more individualized instruction piece. So it's just important that we have nuanced and very elegant solutions for each one of these different disciplines to ensure that we're providing the very best education and the very best experiences for all of our kids as they go through. And we're really going to need to get into this discussion as we move to junior high and high school. So it's just very different at the elementary level when it comes to, to the, to the instruction. Fine Arts Center, obviously, that is going to come online and we have classrooms and we have all kinds of new spaces. And that's going to touch what we can do with some of these academies as far as our, our thinking goes with, with classroom offerings. So we just need to make sure that we've got everything we need for instruction there. And we've got a great start as, as far as that goes with what we had on 2014 bond. We also need to take a look again at our traditional elementary campuses just to ensure that we have the same equipment in every place so that we're providing opportunities. But also, we have, we have issues that really affect our parents' experience when they come. It's really hard to hear in some places. We've got to get those sound systems modernized. We've got to look at all of those, those pieces that, that really allow for, for our parents to experience the, the work that the kids are doing and give them a good place to, to be able to perform what they, what they've prepared. Piano viability is an important piece here as we're looking at this. Pianos, as you already know, are extremely expensive. Look at them individually. When you start adding them up in multiples, it gets a little scary. So we've had a lot of help to be able to look at all of the campuses and make really good determinations about what we need to put in place on each of those campuses to provide first rate equipment for pianos in performance facilities and in, say, choral facilities where it is very important to have an excellent piano. But also look at some really smart solutions for electronic pianos in places that would not only reduce the cost of the district for tuning and upkeep and all of that, but the portability of those and consistency of those just makes them great in exactly the right space. So we're looking at that, that also. We've got a lot of assessment work going on. I'm driving these guys nuts with the amount of assessment work that we have. But we're taking another look at all of our current inventories, just guaranteeing that we know exactly what we have and, and taking a strong look over the next year or so over program design. So it's because for me, what's critical is that everything we do is really intentional. So we have an outcome plan. We have an instruction plan to get there, and then we fund based on the instruction plan. We're not just spending money. It's very targeted. And in order to do that, you have to have a really good idea of what your program outcomes are, are going to be and how you're going to deliver those outcomes. So we're in the middle of that assessment right now. We're also looking at visual, as we talked about, but also theater needs. Because the theater needs extend beyond just the stage space. We also have small theaters at the high schools, at some of them, we have classroom spaces. And there's technology in those spaces. And, and in theory, in our perfect world, the technology in those spaces would connect to the technology that's in the theater would connect to the Fine Arts Center. So the kids, as they move through those facilities, are using similar technology. And that is, that's a really important piece educationally. Obviously, have an evaluation of that storage capacity. The look at mariachi programs for potential expansion. I think that's a, a place that, that can really serve our community. And we need to look closely at that and what that would take. And then elementary music program standards across the system. So that's back to what I was talking about with equipment, but defining exactly what, what they should have. Now, look at that little bitty number. That is just tiny. Okay. So with this, I've, I've sort of broken these down into, into pieces here. And with all of the work that's, that's been done in the Fine Arts Office, and there has been some great work done, we've really been able to get some good numbers out of, out of this. So we have a lot of detailed data to support these, these numbers. There's a couple of exceptions in here where, that we're still studying, and I'll mark those out. But band and orchestra, the artist level instruments, that's, that look at the very top performing ensembles and just ensuring that we've got really high quality instruments in the hands of kids, especially that couldn't afford those really high quality instruments. That's an important piece. For elementary music and instruction risers, you see that number there. Theater equipment, that's going to include everybody. That's a little bit of a placeholder because that's going to take some work with facilities as, as we get into those spaces and try to determine what are the electrical supports that we need in order to do that. But we've put some, some numbers in there that are based on some work that I've done on previous projects, just in terms of how much the equipment costs and what we think that's, that's, that's going to be. But we'll get much more focused on that over the next few months. Visual arts equipment and work surfaces, this is just like the, some of the other work we've done. We want work surfaces across the district that are similar, that are large, more table and configurable type of, of, of surfaces that are less like the individual desks that are in some places. That'll help a lot of things, actually. Piano replacement, those pieces are in there. The uniforms you see are in there. And then choir risers and equipment. This is just basically for choral performance. It's just the choral risers and the shells to make sure that we're standardizing that across the district and we have high quality equipment in place. So you see our preliminary estimated costs down, down there. And that is fine arts. Any questions?
Thank you very much, Dr. Anderson. Mr. Hibbs?
Dr. Anderson, you bring a new vitality, a new excitement here. I, I just want to ask you a question because I can. Band uniforms, are, are they still on a eight, 10 year cycle of, what is a standard life of a band?
So yes and no. The answer is yes. Eight years is sort of a, a cycle for those. What is interesting in throwing a little bit of a monkey wrench into our planning is that the changes that have taken place in marching band uniforms in the last five years have been more significant in, than since they moved from the sort of Texas A and M style uniform to, to the, you know what I'm saying? So since, since that move, I mean, it's a really, really unique change that has happened in the last five years. This is why you stick to your script. This is why you stick to your script.
Be careful. You're, you're going to lose money in your bond.
I know. I know. That, that number just went down. But that, but the short answer is yes, they're sort of on that cycle. What we have to look at right now is how we make sure that we're keeping our, our bands competitive with not, without picking up dramatic costs in the future. We have to figure out a way to do this economically, but the changes that are taking place are dramatic. They are very dramatic, just in terms of the construction of the way they do the uniforms. They have interchangeable parts now, and it's just a completely different concept. So we have a lot of things to look at on that.
Well, the overall. Are they any more expensive or cheaper?
Nothing gets cheaper.
Not if it's going to last.
Our goal is to try to maintain our, our outgoes on that by being really smart about how we purchase these. And, and that's the challenge.
Well, the challenge for you is you're coming into a district that excels in fine arts in every aspect. I mean, these individuals back there.
That's right.
Are, are heroes. Over here, I mean, you know, from the grade school all the way up. So I mean, you are charged with keeping the vitality of the program, you know, at, at peak performance. And I'm using these big words like vitality and such because they're shaking their heads. Mr. Warren, Chad and Michael are going to have to try to keep up with your verbiage. In, in, in less than five sentences, you use nuance, elegance, smart solution, portability, assessment work, visualize, theory, capacity, configurable, and you'll never use mariachi. I can, I commend you for your work.
Sorry.
There, there was no question, just observation. Okay. Very good. That's right. Well, thank you, Mr. Hibbs, Ms. Walton.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. Dr. Anderson, I'm thrilled to, you know, hear what the next level we're shooting for. I, I just want to make a couple of comments. First of all, the orchestra artist level instruments, and that's a big number with a dollar sign in front of it. But the sound of that instrument is so important to encourage that student to continue to be motivated, to be able to, you know, produce a sound that sounds like it's supposed to. And that's what keeps them practicing and, and getting better all the time and wanting, wanting to, to, to go through that process. So I applaud that, I really do. I have one other, and this kind of, you know, all you guys work together pretty well. But I worry in the summertime. Do those instruments that we have spent a lot of money on in this bond issue, do they go home with students or do they stay in the buildings?
Well, that's a good question. The, there's, there's a couple of pieces to, to all of our policy that I need to review. And I can, I, actually, we can defer a question about what, there's two parts to this. One is that instruments that stay with us, we need to make sure are controlled. And we may, need to make sure environmentally that they're controlled. And there are a lot of pieces there that we're looking at a lot of policy to ensure that our procedures are such that we're protecting our long term assets. In, in terms of instruments that we would send home with students, what I typically, for me, what I'm launching is a program that has very strict controls with contracts that are signed, and we know exactly where all those instruments are at all times. So do you have something to add to that?
Good answer, Michael.
Well done.
Well, and it, and I'm sure, I mean, some kids do lessons throughout the summer to, you know, really hone their skills.
And a lot of what we do, we do provide a lot of instruments for the students that can't afford an instrument at all. So we don't want them to go the entire summer and not have access to an instrument. So we do have policies and procedures in places so we know where that instrument is. We make sure it's going to come back to us the next year and that kind of thing. So we do have those procedures in place for that.
Great. I think that's wonderful. And I, and I do hope that we quickly, well, it's getting cool now, but, you know, quickly get to some sort of standards for protecting those instruments from excessive heat or humidity and anything that would negatively affect our wooden instruments specifically. I don't know about all the brass and all that kind of instruments, but I do know what happens to wooden instruments if they're not properly in a controlled environmental area. Thank you. That was all I had to say.
Thank you, Ms. Walton. I have, I don't see any other lights. I'm, I have just a, one question, which is our, our previous bond, we were very focused on increasing that access. On, it was very strategic on here's where our, our fine arts numbers are as far as participation, and we wanted to see that rise. And those strategies worked as far as getting rid of the, the fees and supplying the instruments, the, the uniforms, et cetera. Is the, this total package, does it have a, a targeted increase yield to the next level of participation? Or is it to keep the, the numbers essentially what we have constant moving forward? So growth or?
Okay. Well, growth is a priority for me anyway. Growth in a couple of ways. One is continuing to broaden the umbrella of the fine arts, giving more access to more different types of programs, but also within our existing programs to make sure that we're growing those programs. One of the things that I'm turning our conversation to is really targeted tracking of where students go to school, what, where they go to the next level, what our retention rates are between grades. And looking at, at all of the outside factors, the number of, of different, there's just so many things that kids can do these days. So making sure that we understand how programs affect each other so that we can come up with elegant solutions to, to scheduling, to make sure that we are not making kids make choices too early if we can avoid that. That is, that is a big priority. So, so it's not, because I will tell you that when I was in school, if somebody said, well, you have to pick. You can either play soccer or you can be in band. I would, I would have quit band in a second because I thought I was going to be a star. So that, you know, we don't make good decisions when we're 15 years old. That's the way that works. And so we got to make sure that we're, that we're, that we're looking at every aspect. So in terms of targeted, there are specific percentages that I look at with each program in terms of the overall enrollment of the school. I think we have still capacity for growth in a number of places. And we'll continue to look at, we've already started looking at that pretty in depth. And the granular discussion that I was having earlier is really the answer to your, the first part of your question. Because I, I think what we're looking at here is an enhancement of the same exact principles that we had in the first bond. So we did access on the global level. Now we're looking in these really narrow spaces. And the reason we can do that is because so much great work was done in that first bond. So that, that's, that's, that's why we're able to, to look at it that way. So I, I, you know, growth is a very important thing for all of us. We talk about it all the time.
Great. Great. I appreciate that. Thank you. I don't see any further lights. And besides the impending grievance from some other employees towards Mr. Hibbs, we will continue on to the next section. Use small words.
And I'm here to talk about the Young Scholar Cavaeia System, also known as transportation. Also known as transportation. The very targeted programming of getting our young scholars to where they need to be on time. Just a little bit about our, our transportation and what we worked into this program. We looked at our current fleet, and there's just a little information about that. The number of vehicles we have with under 200,000 miles, the number of vehicles we have with between 200, 250,000 miles, and we don't have any that's over the 250,000 mile mark. These include special ed buses, regular ed buses, the activity buses, as well as the, I'm sorry, that's it for buses right there. We'll talk about the white fleet a little bit later. Useful life of a bus is about 12 years. We look at before replacing the considerations that we look at, the age, the mileage and just the general condition in general of the bus. The 85th legislative session manned- Uh, the 85th Legislative Session mandated the three-point seat belts in all new, new buses that we bought. Uh, and that actually reduced our capacity or will by one-third. And so, we'll, you'll see where we're increasing the capacity, I'm sorry, the number of buses as a result of that, uh, requirement. Again, we are very targeted in trying to meet the needs of the growth of the programs from academic services. So, when they say that we're providing these, these programs, we see how that will impact transportation. And you'll see, uh, that that's accounted for in this, uh, in the assessment here. Uh, and the, uh, efficiencies that have offered by the activity buses, we've got, I think, uh, five or, we've got some that are in, in the fleet right now. And they've really proven to be, uh, effective for us in, uh, moving smaller number of kids from, uh, program to program versus putting the big, uh, 72 passenger buses on the road for four or five kids. Uh, the needs that we're looking at over the, the, between the year 2020 and 2025, on the regular ed buses, we're looking at replacing 35. That means that they would've been aged out and, and met those criteria early. And based on programming needs, adding, uh, a total of 16. So, there's 35 replacements, 16 new for a total of 51. Special ed buses, replacing 20 and adding six for a total of 26. And activity buses, just increasing that fleet, uh, by 20, uh, over that five-year period. And the white fleet vehicles, uh, replacing 62 of those maintenance, uh, trucks and vans and adding another 30, again, based on the growth of the, uh, programs and the facilities around the district for a total of 93. So, we're looking at a replacement of 117 buses over this time and, I'm sorry, 117 vehicles, and adding 72 for a total of 189, for a total of, uh, 13.6 million, uh, in that area, so.
Can, can you clarify? So, you said with the, the three-part, three-point, uh, seat belt, uh, that it's going to decrease our capacity essentially by a third?
That requirement, according to what the numbers we ran in transportation, uh, especially at the secondary level, uh, if, if you put those seat belts on the bus and, and the students are actually required to buckle them.
Right.
Then where we normally could get, you know, two or three smaller-sized students in one seat, that requirement now.
Okay. And that, those numbers are reflected in this?
Those are reflected.
Thank you.
Yes. So, this, uh, kinda spells out, uh, the, uh, years in which we would anticipate, uh, the purchases of these vehicles from 20, 2019, 20, all the way through 23, 24. Uh, and again, special ed, regular ed, activity buses, and the white fleet, uh, it's, it's spelled out there, so. Any questions on that before we turn it back over to Ms. Powell and she'll?
Yeah, we've got, uh, a few questions here. Uh, Mr. Hogg?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Rush. Um, Mr. Hill, just a clarification. I, I keep a lot of tabs on Austin. I thought when that, uh, three-point requirement came in, districts had the chance to be able to opt out of that. District, uh, board had to officially say they couldn't do that. It was not a requirement.
That is correct, but there is a board action that's required if otherwise we have to buy those, uh, with the seat belts on them.
I think as a board, we have to talk about that as an option of what it could be, um, as you can see, if there's some cost. Don't wanna delve into that, but just a little clarification on that. And, uh, Mr. Hogg, knowing our last meeting, we also talked about, as we talk about the cost of transportation, as we all know, this hasn't, our costs, our funding hasn't gone up since 1984, reimbursement from the state, which is a little crazy. I think we've also gotta take this a step further as we get into these needs assessment, 'cause buses are expensive. What we're doing of, is there for shorter routes or anything alternative, um, partnering with other groups? Cities put a lot of money into VIA, those type of things, uh, of using those, some of those needs assessments. And I also wanna take, um, uh, I've had a couple discussions with a couple of my colleagues of safe routes, um, students crossing major streets. 'Cause right now, our, our rules and, and our rules, I think, are pretty good. It's at two mile. I have a four-year-old, can't imagine her walking at the age of five, six, seven, uh, 1.8 miles to a school. I just think that's unrealistic. And then I think of some kids who are crossing, um, major streets that are doing that. Um, I, I think we have to have some flexibility and that does come into account, you know, many other things besides just buses. It's hiring bus drivers, those type of things. So, um, I think transportation is something that we're gonna have to be a little more innovative on in the future of finding some ways to decrease and go there. I just wanted to clarify on that and, and make sure we're forward-thinking, 'cause I, I don't think this number is just, here's the way we do it. I think we've gotta change some of our, our methodology for the future of how we process this to make sure we get an actual needs assessment. Um, 'cause if we are valuing self-safe routes, do we need more buses to be able to account for some of those things? So, um, I appreciate this. I just think we have much more to go in transportation. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hogg. Mr. Hibbs?
Thank you, President Rice. Uh, Mr. Hogg, actually, uh, hit on two points that I was, that I was talking to. So, I'm not gonna belabor them, but the, the one thing about the funding, um, Ms. Powell, you mentioned to us, I think, uh, maybe last year, what if we actually had, um, an increase in the, um, or what is it actually costing the district right now? An additional cost, uh, above what the state subsidized? Isn't, wasn't around 10 to 11 million dollars?
It is, and, um, the state reimbursement pays for about 30% of our costs. And I think it is like 11 million, 12 million dollars is, um, our transportation cost.
So, the key of what, uh, Mr. Hogg was saying and what Ms. Powell is saying is that, um, since the, uh, our gas reimbursement hasn't gone up since 1985, four, 19, let's be clear, right? Uh, since 1984, we're, what we're talking about is 13 million dollars for bus replacement. If we just got the state to start, uh, meeting the obligations, we, we, we could actually pay for the buses, uh, that we need without having to go out to additional bond and, um, and look at the different things. The second thing, and this is good that you're up here, is that, uh, it's talking about, um, uh, 20, um, nine, or 2019, 2020, uh, which is only a year away, uh, that, uh, we're, we're having just under, um, 2 million dollars of, uh, additional bus costs. This won't come from, uh, the, the past bond that we finished, correct? Do we have that built into the, uh, bond that we're finishing up right now?
We have built in escalation into the current bond. And so, we, we've done very well on the transportation piece of, um, of the current bond in terms of getting, uh, new buses and staying within the budget.
Right. But we've already bought the buses that we were going to buy out of the, the current bond?
We have one more round of purchases to make.
Okay. Would that be the, uh, 18 or, or 1.8?
That, that's, uh, on the, yes, uh, I think it's about 1.8, uh, and it's on the, uh, the, it's your five purchases for the current bond program.
Is that under the, uh, 2018, 2019?
No, those, that, this is, uh, subsequent to.
Okay, so that's subsequent. So, we're talking about, um, uh, in, we've got one more purchase off the.
One more round from the square bond for 1819.
Right. And then, uh, then all these others come in pretty immediately. So, um, it talks to the board about the urgency of making sure that we're looking at where this, this funding would come from. Uh, so what Mr. Hogg took in place is something that the board should, um, uh, discuss, uh, absolutely. And the second thing is, um, uh, this should probably be another, um, legislative, uh, discussion point, um, as, especially as this new legislature comes in. Right. Okay, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hibbs. Ms. Walton?
Thank you, Dr. Rush. I just wanna celebrate two things. I can remember, I, I don't know if you were here in 2008, Michael, I mean, Mr. Hill, but, um, this district, were you? Were you here?
Yeah, somewhere. Somewhere in the district.
This district can be so proud because I can remember hearing a presentation, I think it was around 2008, when we were, we were cannibalizing old buses to try to make a new bus or a bus that would run out of one of them. It may have been longer ago than that, but we were in dire straits on buses. Uh, we were keeping a bunch of mechanics really busy. And, um, it, it is a testament to, um, you know, our planning and that strategic planning and to our community for approving a bond that replaces buses, uh, for a very good reason, which is safety, uh, above everything else. And then the other thing I want to applaud is the idea of buying these activity buses is, is genius. It really is. Um, you know, they're, they're so much cheaper and there's just some real benefit to that. So, kudos to, to, um, those decisions. Thank you.
I don't see any other lights indicating questions. Uh, just one general curiosity question on, on the buses are, and this is too into the weeds. Just curious on, uh, uh, the utilization of, uh, additional, uh, for these purchases, propane diesel mix? Any thoughts?
It, uh, we generally try to, to stick with the propane, but with, there are some diesel that we continue to buy in the fleets because of the long, long hauls and.
Great. All right, thank you. Ready for the next part?
I, I think, uh, we were just having some conversation there. I think that, um, uh, that the buses that have been identified for purchase in the next five years would probably have about a 50/50 mix between propane and diesel. All right. Um, heard a lot of information this evening. And so, um, this is the sum of all the parts, if you will, 1.2 billion dollars. And I think of a couple of points I would make here. Uh, one is that, um, this work has been taking place in earnest over 10 months. And it's still, you heard several people reference, you know, we're still looking at things, we're still, uh, refining. And so, I think we've captured largely most of the need. And now then it's about getting good estimates around it. I think we've been conservative in our estimates, but things will continue to, to kinda work in as we, we've really honed in on, on what a precise, a more precise number is. And then, secondly, remind everyone, uh, like we said at the very beginning, that, um, on the, uh, the fine arts, the, uh, technology piece and the transportation piece, we've already culled out here needs for the next five years on the facility piece. That is something that still requires some master planning over a period of years, not just five years. And, and so, uh, please know that, uh, that that is work that will be taking place going forward. Um, in terms of long-range planning, again, to bring all this back together, we had the meeting September 5th. We've had a meeting tonight, uh, so now two large, uh, pieces around long-range financial planning. In, uh, our previous meeting, we talked again about the General Operating Fund. And we talked about the fact that, uh, we know that we have deficits coming absent any change in the current funding system or choice that we may make in terms of our tax rate. And so, uh, you see that here, I've highlighted in the green bar, um, our estimates going forward of, um, uh, operating deficits. Um, we talked at that September 5th meeting about our options for reducing the deficit. And we don't have a whole lot of choices. They're pretty broad categories, but they're pretty limited. Uh, budget reductions, uh, actually generating revenue through enrollment management, trying to, to boost enrollment. Of course, that brings with it cost, uh, but then also a potential of raising the MNO tax rate. Uh, we tax at a dollar four right now on the MNO tax rate. By law, any increase above a dollar four has to be approved by voters. And we can go up to a dollar 17, but any increase over a dollar four has to be approved by, by voters through a tax ratification election or TRE. Tonight, obviously, we spent a lot of time talking about capital needs. And again, I go back to points that we made early on, that our capital investments, uh, are, are really key to, um, achieving our strategic plan and delivering the kinds of programs that we want to offer to kids. And so, we have to look at, um, at what those investments are and align them to our programming and when we want those programs to, um, to, to come on, online. We have kind of a unique opportunity here is that, um, our scheduled principal and interest payments right now on existing debt, debt that we've already issued, will be declining in, from now, from the next, uh, 25 years. And you'll see that chart in, uh, just a minute. But, uh, so as our debt goes down, that gives us some room on the debt service side of our tax rate to recognize some savings there and still insert, uh, some additional investments, i.e. another bond package to continue this work. Um, we also have seen that property values are trending up. So, those two things together give us an opportunity to look at both having a bond package to address these capital needs that we've talked about this evening, and then also, um, to, uh, consider an increase on the MNO tax rate to, uh, meet our operating needs. A decrease in the debt service rate will help limit or mitigate or offset, uh, any increase in the MNO rate. And again, this gives us, this is a holistic, uh, approach to addressing these needs for a long period of time. This chart, uh, shows you what, um, our debt looks like, um, our debt payments over the next 25 years. You see how that, uh, uh, is trending down. This chart shows you our tax rates. And we have, uh, we expect, uh, some, uh, moderate increases in our property, our, I'm sorry, these are our property values. Uh, and it demonstrates that we have, we expect to have some moderate growth in our property values over the next few years. Um, we talked extensively at the last meeting, September 5th, about, uh, the additional revenue that could be generated on the general fund side of our budget, uh, by raising the MNO tax rate. There's a whole lot of numbers on this chart, but if you look in the column on the far right-hand side, you can see that, um, what additional amount of revenue we can generate with each additional penny of tax. So, the next to the, the column next to the left has the tax rate on it. So, you can see as we go up all the way from a dollar five, all the way up to the max of a dollar 17, you look in that far right-hand column, that's the additional revenue that we can add into the general fund for operating needs. At the same time, we expect that over the next five years, um, we have room, uh, on the debt side. We expect that, uh, the rate will be declining because our debt payments are declining. And we have modeled, uh, through First Southwest Securities and Hilltop, um, our financial advisors, that, um, we have an opportunity to lower that debt service rate and still, uh, look at an additional, a new bond package for additional capital needs and still manage to lower the debt service rate in total. And the amount by which we lower it will depend on choices that we would make on a bond program, on the size of that bond program. Uh, we've worked with Hilltop and asked them to model different scenarios. I have one on, on the screen here, and we looked at the same one, uh, when we met, uh, on September 5th. And this demonstrates what it would cost the owner of an average-valued home in our district if we were to raise the tax rate, the MNO tax rate, and then also have a bond package of, say, 500 million dollars. Okay? And so, with that scenario, we know that we could, or we anticipate that we could lower the debt service rate by five cents. And depending on where you, uh, would go on an MNO rate, we went to a dollar 12 or a dollar 13. I'm looking across the top there in that orange bar. Uh, if you set the tax rate at a dollar 12, a dollar 13, all the way up to a dollar 17, you can see here, uh, the last line that's highlighted in blue, um, that is the net increase of the tax rate that we would experience. Because again, the debt service rate would, we anticipate would come down by five cents. The MNO rate would go up if we, if we raised that rate and, and had a TRE, successful TRE. And so, even if you look all the way to the far right, a dollar 17, uh, the net increase to, uh, the taxpayer would be an eight-cent increase on that tax rate, the total tax rate. And for the owner of an average-value home, if you look down at the bottom, it's about 130 dollars a year for that, for the investments in, um, in our, in our, our educational programs, both the operating side and the capital side. So, that's just one example, and, and we can model any number of combinations. But this just kinda demonstrates how, how this can work together where you have both, um, uh, you increase the MNO tax rate. And again, to do that. increase the M&amp;O tax rate, and again, to do that, we'd have to have a TRE, pass a TRE, and also at the same time, consider a bond election for capital investment. So it's a holistic approach to addressing long-range financial needs for the district and sustaining innovative program offerings. Just some things to keep in mind. On our bond elections, school districts by law can only have a bond election on a May or a November ballot. For a tax ratification election today, there's a little more flexibility on when you hold these. We're hearing that through the legislative process, there may be a move to try to force all TREs to be on that November ballot. So that's to be seen. But in our planning, we've been thinking about possibly how these would work together. And a November of 2019 potential election seems to make sense, where we would have both a bond election on that ballot if the board chooses to go forward with this kind of planning, and maybe a TRE to raise that M&amp;O tax rate. So the timing kind of lines up with November of 19. There are a number of steps that we would need to take between now and then. Most importantly, on the capital side is determining if the board wants to continue exploration of the discussions we've had tonight and gather more community input. The way to do that is through a capital needs steering committee. And so ultimately, if the board decides we want to pursue this, we would post an application online, select a committee of individuals, and they would begin to meet likely in January is when we would want a committee to meet if we're trying to get to a bond election in November of 19. And then obviously, in the spring, we're going to build our budget, our general operating budget. We will continue to consider opportunities for efficiencies along the way. We'll continue to consider what property value trends are doing, what happens with the legislature, and present options for maybe a potential change in the M&amp;O tax rate. And that would come through the budget discussion process that would take us all the way into June. And then ultimately, if there is a capital needs steering committee, they'll report out to the board, probably starting in late May, and then file a report maybe in June. We'll adopt a budget, the general operating budget, in June. We'll get property values again at the end of July. Gives us again, another look at what, what revenue opportunities are based on those updated values. And then ultimately, if a choice is made for holding any kind of election, whether it's a bond election, or a TRE election, or both on a November ballot, the last day to call that is going to be August 19th for a November of 2019 election. So the next steps that we would be, you know, seeking here with the board is a discussion around and maybe a choice about, do we want to continue that exploration on the capital side? And if so, that next step is forming a capital needs steering committee and adopting a charge to that committee. So that really begins to wrap up our presentation here. And I have to thank everybody. There's been, like I said, 10 to 12 months' worth of work, a lot of work, that has taken place, not just from the people sitting here, but I'm guessing well over 200 people along the way have had, had input, direct input into this process even up to this point. And that work will continue on. I'm very proud of what we've put together here. So that will take any final questions.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Powell. It's a huge amount of work, as you've said. Thank you, and to everybody involved. It's very, very informative and essential for us to try to wrap our heads around all this so that we can govern appropriately. Mrs. Mays has a question or two.
Thank you, President Reich. The only question that I have is on our example for the bond and the TRE combination for that estimated $500 million bond packet and a reduction of the INS rate of five cents. Could we have an example of the $1.2 billion, which is what was presented tonight? We have an example of what those numbers would look like?
We can. A couple of points about that. I think part of that discussion needs to involve, you know, is it a five-year program? Or if we were going to seek something of the total, you know, in the range of a billion-dollar bond package? It probably would need to be a six, a seven, or an eight-year bond program even, just to get the work done. The amount of work you've seen here is something that I think extends beyond what could reasonably be done in a five-year program anyway. So a choice on the length of that bond program would be another factor in that model. And so just some things that we can make some assumptions on, and we can absolutely model that. Hilltop has a model set up, and we just need to give them the parameters, and they can run that.
Yeah. Well, I'd like to see that, maybe with the examples of a six, seven, eight, to maybe 10-year, just to get an idea of what those different ranges look like as we're going forward to make some of these decisions.
Absolutely. Another thing to think of, if we, if it's a longer bond program, then we really would need to increase the amount that's in the bond program for technology.
Right.
And for transportation and even fine arts, because a lot of what's in their pieces are lifecycle replacements. And so that your six, there are going to be more things to be replaced, your seven will be more, you know, so we, you know, we would actually be increasing the dollar amount a bit, but yes, we can model that.
Yeah. Okay. Well, thank you. Yeah, I really just, I would just like to see the model based on what was presented tonight. So that's why I went ahead with that $1 billion example. And then just finally, I do just want to say thank you for all the hard work. I know it's real easy to see everybody come up here and talk, but what y'all have done logistically behind the scenes for a while really means a lot. And really appreciate you wanting to bring the information to us as clear and thoughtful as possible, so that really gives us a good starting point to start when we're making our discussions. So thank y'all very much for your hard work.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. I don't see any other lights indicating further questions at this point. I have a couple of clarifying questions. So with moving forward, at the next meeting, considering a likely positive pulse of the board to move forward with the capital needs steering committee, it would be at that meeting where we would take action on the formation of the committee as well as the charge? Or would the charge come down?
Ideally, yes, even on the charge. And we typically will adopt a charge so that people, as they are applying, know what they are tasked with. So yes.
Okay. So that's something that we may be able to get accomplished at the next meeting, or we may not, just depends because at this point, we're not taking action, but we can certainly lean as far as guidance to start drafting a charge, that type of thing. Related to that, once those capital needs committee meetings occur, would we be incorporating somebody, not DeYoung, but cooperative strategies is what they are now?
And we've, yes.
To facilitate, or?
I think so. I think that's helpful to have someone who has that skill set to facilitate those kinds of situations.
They were really helpful last time, for sure. Okay. And then just to expand a little bit on the conversation that you were having with Mrs. Mays, you look at the rough numbers, we're at $117 to $118 million for the five-year bond on the transportation, fine arts, safety, security, technology. You throw in the, on the facility side, the likelihood of two elementary schools and a junior high in there, that's probably another $100 million about, that's pretty much guaranteed into this five-year package. So, you know, we're around $220 million or so, and so there's at least almost $900 million to consider paring down to whatever that number might be, $500 million or more or less. So that's, that's the work that's going to be extremely difficult, as well as the timing and economy of scale of what value we can get now versus later. So I don't know if, would those considerations be completely driven through the capital needs steering committee process? Or I guess it would, plus your informed recommendation and work going forward as you gain more knowledge.
Yeah. If we do it similar to the way we worked up to the 2014 bond program, it was DeYoung-Richter previously, now cooperative strategies, if that's the way we go. They led us, a senior team, on some, through some discussions, that led us to a place where we made some presentations and recommendations into the committee for input and consideration and tweaked and adjusted here and there. And so, you know, I think yes, I think that we would begin to internally do that phasing and that prioritizing. And again, you do it largely around your instructional programming. And so that involves the entire team in making those choices.
Right. Very good. All right. Well, thank you, everybody. It's, one of our main tenets in our strategic plan is always about world-class facilities, and that's what our community has supported and what our community has shown to expect and love the results so far with this current bond implementation. So I would hope that they would, they would receive this as we go forward to continue to meet that expectation appropriately, positively, versus something contrary. So, all right. Well, with that said, I don't see last call. Any other questions? All right. Well, thank you very much. Okay, next, we're at the open forum for non-agenda items. I don't see any cards. No cards. We'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kavassos.
Thank you, Dr. Reich. And just a couple of updates on the things that have been happening in AISD. We had our groundbreaking for our fine arts and athletics complex, and we had a number of students that were there helping to celebrate, but also to welcome everyone there. We had a very successful, I would categorize that as a groundbreaking ceremony. And so next picture is, we stayed so long that we got a lot of work done. No, I'm kidding. I'm kidding. That's actually the site work that has taken place so far. The shovels wouldn't do that by itself. But that's what has happened thus far, which is really interesting, that it is really moving right along with the site work that's happening. So congratulations to the following individuals for our employee of the month. And so we have Anna Pinson from Ditto, Andy Jenkins from Nichols, Jonathan Gaffney from Segin High School, David Jackson from Land Services. These are our teachers of the month and employee of the month, and these are always an exciting time, and they really appreciate it. This time, our credit union, Employee Credit Union also went with us and provided some money for them as well. Had the opportunity to go to Gunn Junior High to celebrate their fourth consecutive seven out of seven distinctions from TEA. Dr. Buell was able to join us there, visited with the staff and Mr. Villarreal. Gunn, again, continues to perform in an exceptional manner, so was there to celebrate with them. We hosted our annual faith-based pastors luncheon on September 25th. We had a great turnout. Mr. Hibbs did a fantastic kind of orientation at the beginning for the group. We had good discussion and a lot of questions, and very, very much impressed with our Career Tech Center. We hosted it there at the Career Tech Center. So thank you to the Career Tech Center staff. We seem to go there over and over, and they're so gracious. Last Friday, Bowie High School football coach, Danny Darmen, was honored during a surprise ceremony in his school assembly. Hopefully by now, everybody's heard that Darmen, Coach Darmen, helped rescue a woman who was trapped in her car during rising floodwaters a couple of weeks ago. After getting her to safety, Darmen left and never got the woman's name or information. Her name is Eden Russem, and she was at Bowie on Friday to surprise Coach Darmen and to thank him personally. Tarrant County Commissioner Andy Nguyen was also on hand to thank Coach Darmen. We were at Tassie Tasby, but Michael represented our district, as well as Beth Hollinger and others, and Rennie as the principal. So Coach Darmen, he's gotten a lot of congratulations, and we'll continue congratulating him and thanking him for his service and commitment to people. That's who he is. Also, last weekend, our district was well-represented at Tassie Tasby Convention. Dr. Words and I and trustee Chapa was able to present on our research-based active learning cycle. The group was very interested in the work that we were doing, so I thank everyone who helped, Leslie, for helping with that as well. Monday night was the 36th annual, 36th annual, the inquiry marching extravaganza at UTA. Brings together all our high schools, all our junior highs and UTA, and their performances were outstanding. I mean, they simply were every year. This is just an amazing event with hundreds and hundreds of students. So thank you to the Fine Arts Department, all our directors, and all the parent volunteers, and everyone who supports these students. It was just a fantastic event. On Tuesday, we recognized, had the chance to recognize custodians for Custodial Workers' Appreciation Day. We have the best custodians in anywhere. They have a strong dedication to their work and to each other, which is really nice to see when they meet at the beginning of the year. I'm able to go and visit with them, along with Kelly and other staff members, and they're just an outstanding group. And I open it up to questions, and they have a good number of questions. I could stay there for, it seems like hours, but they had work to do also. So anyway, it was great, and they're great custodians. Finally, this new school year, we're implementing new report cards for kinder first and second grade students. This is in a whole new look and grading system, input from teachers and really serving our students well, so that they can, parents can understand and get a better sense. We talk a lot about early childhood and early literacy. Our report cards really inform the work so that parents get a better opportunity to understand the academic progress of their children. So I thank all the teachers and staff that were part of that report card development as we launch it this school year. That concludes my report.
Excellent things going on, Dr. Kavassos. And I guess a point of clarification would be on the great work that's already done on our Fine Arts Center is likely because of Mr. Hill's bulldozer abilities at the beginning.
That's right.
Yes. 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 Well.
We gotta drive.
He turned it on.
He turned it on, and he lifted the bucket. Did it really flawlessly. That's right. Very good. Any trustees with reports? All right. Madam Secretary, do you have any items to consider? Oh, sorry.
Yes, President Reich. My button was on to make a quick report, and then I'll do my secretary duties if that's okay.
Very good. I apologize.
No problem. I just want to have a reminder that this month is Domestic Violence and Cancer Survivor Month. I had opportunity to attend a girls' talk group at Bowie High School that had an event, and it was very meaningful to see people and hear people, particularly our students that we're serving every day, and the environments that they have come from, the things that they have seen, the things that they have experienced. And I believe in my posting, I said it's just amazing what some of our students, the experiences that they bring into our building. So it was a wonderful celebration event, and I just want to thank our teachers and administrators throughout the district for supporting our students, not just academically in the classroom, but for all the support that you have to give to our students holistically for their life in general. So just thank y'all very much for that. Now, I will move into my secretarial duties. President Reich, I noted that administration will look into the number of temporary buildings that are still remaining and make a report back to the board. And that's all I have.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Mays. All right. It is 11:07, and we will now move into closed session pursuant to section. It is 11:07, and we will now move into closed session pursuant to sections 551.071, or 551.072 through 551.084 of the Texas Government Code.